And Methany.
Hi.
Hi. I'm so sad that this is happening.
I know, I know, I know. So are we. I just want to say congratulations on your retirement, Lisa. And the way I met you is that I was teaching third grade and you were in your first grade position and we became buddies. And our classes came together often to, for, I think, four years, we were buddies together. And we came together to celebrate and have our kids read together. And I really got to know you on a professional level and on a personal level. And I just admire you so much and all that you have brought to kids and your love of teaching and learning and being in the classroom. And I also want to just acknowledge and appreciate your advocacy for kids who need a little extra push, who, you know, maybe don't have family members that can advocate for them, you know. And that's our job as educators, to advocate for kids who may not have an advocate. So thank you for your hard work. I will truly miss you, but I know we will be friends for life. And I know that one day our dogs will meet and have a playdate together on the beach in the near future. I love you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Methany.
Heather, I don't see any other hands. Heather, you're muted.
So sorry, I'm making the same mistake. So thank you, Lisa, for joining my car. We are on Nancy Kanashiro. And let's see if we're going to try to do a panel.
To try to speak.
Heather, there's a note for Lisa from Jan Cannon.
Oh, perfect. Okay, great. Lisa, don't leave. From Jan Cannon, Lisa, a Basij Bear from the start. Loved working with you from your first kindergarten class to the last first grade class. You are a wonderful teacher and I will miss you. Wishing you all the best in retirement. Hugs. Jan Cannon.
Thank you, Jan.
Oh, I missed your message. Can your audio work?
I'm just curious, can you hear me?
Yeah, 100%.
Yes, can?
Yes.
Oh, yay. Okay, sorry. I just, thank you. Well, first of all, I'm going to have to go back and watch this recording where I can really listen and be more present. I started to say before, I wasn't envisioning being in a car during this really important and special moment in my career. And also, just as I leave this beautiful district that's been, you know, part of my entire life, I'm age six. We're just about around the corner from visiting my dad, who is in hospice care. And, you know, we got a call to come down today. So this wasn't really how I imagined today, passing us very bittersweet. But I wanted to say, you know, express my gratitude to everyone. From Patty Jacobs, who was my first grade teacher at Green Bay School in 1966, and who inspired me to be a teacher, and who later became my principal. So grateful to work the last many years under Sally's leadership. My wonderful teaching partner of five years, Janine Swan. It's been a dream to work with you. And I also want to say, because I may not be able to stay on the call long enough, to chime in, for my wonderful friend of 40 years, Nancy Kanashiro, who inspired me from the beginning of my teaching career. All my best ideas came from Nancy. And I'm just so happy for her as well. And so I want to thank you all for being such a big part of my life. I've just been so grateful to be a part of the district. So thanks very much, everybody.
And Lisa, stay there for a second, because Sally Peck wants to say something.
Sorry, David, I have already taken my time with Lise.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Hi, Nancy.
Great. All right. Nancy, there you are. Okay, perfect. And we can hear and see you. It's perfect.
You know what I was thinking is, you know, I wanted to say something about Lisa. I mean, I wouldn't even be at Basij without Lisa. You know, we were college roommates. And for the longest time, I, you know, I was an envy of just her Basij experience. I just felt like they were just, you know, Basij was so innovative. And I, you know, I really was looking forward to a time in my life where maybe I could move up to Marin because I was in San Mateo. So anyway, when that opening came, I, you know, I jumped at the chance. And I have to, you know, thank her so much. And, you know, being her best friend for all these years, what a special treat to be able to teach next door to her, to teach with her. She is amazing. The way she connects with kids, the way she connects with parents, her deep understanding of child development. I mean, she's such a gift. So I'm just glad I got a chance to talk about Lisa because she really is, you know, the epitome of an outstanding teacher. And I love her.
So great. Nancy, I just would like to comment on when we spent time in Boston together. So there was a group of us that was at the Harvard Achievement Gap Institute. And Nancy was not one of us. She had gone to Boston on her own time to do some professional growth around teaching science to young kids. And I have to say, I was jealous of your experience because I love science so much. And I was happy to be where I was. And we were having a wonderful time. But we celebrated my birthday together that night. So that was really great. I'll always remember how much fun that was. And again, you know, walking into your classroom is magical. And I always, like with Lisa, I wanted my kids to be in the room. And you always made me want to be a teacher again. You just looked like you were having so much fun. So thank you for everything and for being, you know, just, I loved our chats.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
And here comes Sally Peck. So I think you're unmuted now.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to add to what Lisa said. For 16 years working with Lisa, the first six years, I continued to hear about this woman down on the peninsula, who seemed to have all these great ideas. And the two of them supported one another from afar. And when an opening did happen, opposite Lisa in first grade, Nancy applied. And hiring her was truly a no brainer, because I had already heard about all, I'd heard for six years, all about this lady named Nancy down on the peninsula. I had heard about best practices and things she was doing. And I just have to say, it was a no brainer to hire her. And to this day, and to the very end of her career, she has held herself to some really high standards as a teacher. And both she and Lisa have inspired me. They never let down as they came into the finish line as educators. So thank you, Nancy.
Thanks, Sally.
And Brian Ross. Brian, you're unmuted.
I'm sorry, that was an inadvertent hand raised by my child. Apologies. But congratulations, Liz and Sally, because you've done an excellent job. It's been a pleasure being in the district.
And Susan Warner. Susan, you're unmuted.
Oh, thank you. This is for both Lisa and Nancy. This is bittersweet for me. Thank you both so much for your friendship over these past years. You are two of my favorite people. Your soft presence, your kindness, and your smiles always lifted my spirits. You are the ultimate teachers. Thank you for teaching me. And I am going to miss you very much.
I'm going to miss you too, Susan. Thank you.
And Methany.
Hey, Nancy. Congratulations on your retirement. I am so honored to have worked with you these past seven years. And I've learned so much from you. And I feel like you've also kind of taken me under your wing. And, you know, in passing in the hallways, little whispers of advice and all of our chats together. I just really appreciate you so much. And I know that we will continue our friendship together after this.
You know, I was on the interview committee when Methany applied. And boy, she was a shining star. I mean, I saw it right away. And look at you. Great heights.
This is about you, not about me.
No, but I didn't get a chance. Anyway, I'm going to miss you. But yeah, we'll continue our friendship. But basically, God, under Sally, you know, we've hired some really great people. That's all I can say. Really. Yeah, it's a wonderful place.
Thank you for your dedication to our Basij Bears.
Thank you.
Heather, I don't see any other hands up. There was something in chat.
Yes, there is. From Annalyn. From Annalyn, we love, capitalize, you, Mrs. CJ and Mrs. Kanashiro. We were fortunate to have you both as first grade teachers for our children. We were truly gifted with two teachers who have set our children on a path of a love of learning and mentors for us as parents. Thank you, capitalize, both, for the lifelong gift.
And I see Holly Myers joining.
And you have Judy Anne and Maya above her.
Oh, good catch. Thank you. Holly, you're unmuted.
Hi. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Ms. Kanashiro, I just want you to know what a lasting impact you have had on our family. I don't think you will ever realize the impact that you've had on all of us, not just Graham, who you had in first grade. But when I think about the year that he had with you and that we all shared with you, the word that always comes to mind is magical. And I truly think that it was just a magical time, that you're a magical teacher. And you have a true gift for igniting a love of learning in all of your students. And we're going to miss you so much. I'm going to miss seeing you around campus. And I wish you all the best. And I hope that our paths will cross again sometime. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Love you. Thank you.
And Judy Anne.
Hi, Nancy.
Hi.
Nancy, you are an accomplished educator. You have consistently achieved a classroom of peace, calm, respect, and focus. My wish for you is that peace and calm will follow you all the days of your retirement. Congratulations, Nancy.
Oh, thank you, Judy Anne. So good to hear your voice.
And Maya.
Hi, Nancy.
Hi.
I just want to share with everybody that it's really unfortunate that I didn't get to work that much with Nancy, because Nancy was able to do everything inside her own classroom. And it's true. It's true. I didn't see a lot of kids for counseling from Nancy's class, because Nancy was there for them. She sat with them. She worked through so many issues with families and students. And she was just kind of like a one stop shop. And we're going to miss you greatly. And congratulations. And I'm only bummed that my kids aren't going to be able to have you as a teacher. But I wish you all the best and hope we can remain in touch.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Maya. That meant a lot.
Heather, I don't see any more hands up.
Jan Cannon in the chat. Nancy, I will miss you so much. I am excited to hear about all your new adventures. Will you take up surfing?
Woo, yeah. That's so sweet. Thank you.
All right. I think that's, David, no more hands? Okay. All right. Thank you, Nancy.
Say one quick thing. I just want to say to Liz and to Sally that, you know, I am going to be forever thankful to you guys for implementing such wonderful programs that, you know, teach kids to think critically and to collaborate, believe in their ideas and take risks. You know, I just feel like I landed in the right place at the right time. And I just truly appreciate, you know, their leadership. So that was huge for me. Thank you. And I also want to just say thanks to the whole community. Thank you to the wonderful students, incredible staff, and just the supportive parents. I mean, I've just loved teaching at Basij. So thank you very much. I appreciate everything.
You've got one more comment, Heather, from Lisa Gleeb.
Oh, perfect. Yes, Lisa. Mrs. Kanashiro, we feel so thankful that Ryan had you as a teacher last year. He flourished in your class and we will miss you. Good luck in your retirement. You will be missed.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, everybody.
All right, Nancy. Bye. Okay. And our last retiree is Sandy Hench. Sandy's here with us. Sandy, you can unmute yourself. Well, whatever you want to do. We're going to make you listen first. So Sandy, you are, I know, a valued co-teacher in Room Three at Kent. You are a constant in children's lives. I met you when I first came to the district and walked through the classroom. And you are a presence there that I'm not sure how it's going to be replaced. But I know that you have so many interests. We run into each other around the town. And I know you have lots of friends. And you're just probably ready to get to know them all better like I am and have some time to yourself just to think. But I'm not sure how Room Three is going on without you.
Thank you so much, Liz. That's so nice. I appreciate that.
Very well, very true. All right, David, you have a customer.
I do. Lisa Sandberg.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, Sandy. Who are the kids going to confuse me with now? Oh, right? We used to get confused all the time.
I know. I know.
I just wanted to bring up a really fun memory that I have of you. I got to know you at Bob Kane's retirement party.
Yes.
I don't know if you remember that. It was at the Marin Arden Garden Center. And you were so kind to me. And I don't know if it was just this thing where we looked alike. I don't know. But you were so kind. And I just remember you were so welcoming. And just as you have been every day when I've seen you at Kent. The kids are really, really going to miss you. And your dedication to the district has really been amazing. So I'm envious of you going off at this time and have such a great time with your new grandbaby.
Thank you, Lisa. He was born this morning.
Oh, congratulations. Yay. Oh, that's wonderful. Oh, that's wonderful.
Very healthy, eight pounds, six and a half ounces, big boy. Just wonderful.
Oh, that's terrific.
Thank you.
Enjoy being a grandma.
Thank you.
And Tracy Knott.
Looks like I'm on now. Okay.
Hi, Trace.
Sandy, you just exude positivity, warmth, and compassion in a room where we work with lots of different students. It was always, always consistent that you came in with such a positive energy and such a style. You always were so well, you are, not was, but you are so well dressed. And I loved your hair. I was always complimenting you because just the attitude and your presence was so welcoming. You will sorely be missed. I really enjoyed having lunch with you. And just our work together with the students was just wonderful. I loved hearing the stories about Blake and Emily and Jason and what they were up to. And I hope you keep in touch.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you.
And Grant.
Hi, Sandy.
Hi, Grant.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm so happy for you. And I just want to say, Sandy, from the moment that we first met, I'd just like to agree with everything that people have said, as well as what Tracy said. You just truly exude an accepting, a big heartedness, and a compassion and care for people around you, especially the students of our school, and equally so the staff. I just cannot think of a more deserving way for you to retire this school year than with the acknowledgement of the Golden Bell Classified Award. And you are so deserving of that honor. And even last week, when we stumbled upon each other in Room Three, when a student was taking a video tour, you were so kind to her and to me, even though we had interrupted the meeting that you were in, Room Three, on Zoom. But it's just a perfect example of your adaptability and flexibility and just kind of go with the moment and just be present to the people that are around you. And I know there are countless students that have benefited from your spirit. And I just, I thank you so much for your service. And congratulations on the arrival of that grandbaby. We'll miss you. We'll miss you, Sandy. But take good care.
Thank you, Grant. Thank you very much.
And Heidi Longo.
There we go. I just lost my place here. There we go. Sandy, can you hear me?
I can, Heidi.
Okay. Sandy, you embody grace, warmth, intelligence, humanity, and kindness. Our students are so lucky to have had you working side by side with them. I know that they felt safe with you, supported and challenged by you in all the right ways. It takes a really special person to be in your role as aide. And on a personal note, I have to tell you that I've loved getting to know you over the years. I remember when you supported me when Nicholas was facing some really challenging health issues when he was younger. And that meant a lot to me. I loved hearing about your real estate endeavors and was actually quite inspired by that. And of course, have enjoyed hearing about your children and all their adventures. I really am going to miss you and seeing your face at Kent.
Thank you, Heidi. I'm going to miss all of you, too.
Heather, I don't have any more hands up.
Great. Okay, let's go to the chats. And I think there was something. Hold on, I want to make sure I did not. I know there was one still here from the Murawski family. Okay, let me just get it. Sorry. Hold on. Wasn't there one? Was there? Yes, it is. Okay. This was still going back out. I just want to, I didn't want this one to get away from us. From Chelsea, thank you, Mrs. Kanashiro. Mrs. CJ, you both rock. Our boys Cole and Dylan adore you and will forever remember the magical learning moments and inspiration. Your dedication to your craft and your love for teaching shines through. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Love the Murawski family. And this is from Julie Gallagher. I echo Liz's wonder, how will Room Three get on without you? You are certainly not replaceable. You have such an incredible calm, gentle way with kids. And you are flexible, kind, understanding, and always a team player. I personally will miss working with you and wish you nothing but the best in your retirement. Happy trails and happy adventures in grandparenthood.
Oh, thank you, Julie.
And then from Jan Cannon, happy retirement. Being a grandma is the best. Jan. And then let's see here. One last one from Eileen Braff. Thank you, Sandy, for all you did for both of my kids. Congratulations and enjoy your retirement.
Oh, thank you, Eileen. Very nice. Thank you all. This has meant a lot to me to hear all these wonderful comments. I do appreciate it so much.
And as we transition into the next part of our agenda, Sandy is the Golden Bell recipient in the classified staff category for Kent Middle School this year. And so all of the things that were just said about her are doubling down on the Golden Bell.
Thank you, Liz.
Well deserved. I'm sorry you didn't get a ceremony.
I had one. It was great.
Did you get a bell?
I didn't.
Oh, not yet?
No. Do I get a bell?
I don't know.
Oh, I don't know.
If Ross is still on the call, he can tell us.
Oh, I don't know the answer to that. Somebody asked me that. And I said, I had no idea.
I don't either. All right. Thanks, Sandy.
Okay, thank you very much, all of you. I appreciate it.
All right, we transition now. Oh, Heather, go ahead. You're the mistress of ceremonies.
Wait, the mistress. Oh, back to the, oh, recognition of Golden Bell recipients.
Right.
Do you want me to read these? Or Liz, do you want to do these?
Go ahead. I'll grab people if they're here and bring them up to be honored.
Okay, great. All right. So congratulations are in order, too, on the certificated side from Basij, Marty Ross. And from Kent, Jill Kleema. Congratulations. And on the classified side, from Basij, Gretchen Harris. From Kent, Sandy Hench, who was just with us.
There we go.
All right. Warm congratulations. I, for one, watched the ceremony. And I know it was nothing like getting the applause in a big room at Dominican. But it is what it is. So I guess we open it up, Liz?
Yeah. And I think Sandy left. So we'll leave it with the three.
Okay. Great.
This is David Riedel. Just a comment from Marty Ross. We've seen your magic in the classroom. And it's amazing. You're a well, well deserved owner.
Thank you.
Barbara Libby. I've got a whole slew of people. So here comes Barbara.
Okay, but I just want to clarify, since there was a question about the actual bell. Lisa Sandberg says, yes, you should receive a bell. And if Lisa says it, it's going to come true.
This is Libby. You're on.
Am I unmuted?
You are.
Okay, great. Marty, this is for you. I'm so sad that you didn't get a huge celebration. But I wanted to acknowledge you that there was no better choice than you for the Golden Bell, Marty. You are just an amazing teacher. And every child in your class has been blessed. Marty, you have an extensive subject matter knowledge. And you share your love for integrated learning and devotion to teaching the whole child. And recently, you've helped to organize the Basij Talent Show. Was it the first talent show ever? I don't know. But that gave each student who participated an opportunity to express themselves through the arts. Marty, you know, in each of your students, their strengths and their weaknesses, and you differentiate their instruction for each student learning style. And of course, your four-legged teaching partner, Hanu, helps you in supporting anxious and shy students to feel comfortable and to find their own voices. You create a warm and welcoming learning environment for students before COVID, with flowers growing in front of your classroom door. And you incorporate gardening into your curriculum. And you are the gardening fairy, even during the summer. I've seen you come on campus and water the gardens. When you drop off your class, Marty, in the art room, again, before COVID, you always take your time to set the class up for success. And although it is your prep time, you make sure you stay for a minute or two to hear the introduction of my lesson, because you're interested in what I teach as well, and how you can integrate arts into your curriculum and connect with the students that way. You have a deep sense of passion for building You have a deep sense of passion for building community, not only in your classroom, but also amongst colleagues. With your big heart and observant personality, you reach out to children and adults who need some sunshine in their lives. Marty, you are one kind of a gem. Thank you for all you do. We're blessed to have you in our community.
Thank you so much, Barbara. That means a lot to me. I really admire you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Sally Peck?
Marty, I would like to add to what Barbara shared about you. Marty was voted by her colleagues to be our Basich Bell this year. Marty's kind, truly kind and generous spirit. And her willingness to always speak up and advocate for the children does not go unnoticed. And of course, Barbara mentioned, and it's true, her hairy, four-legged sidekick, Hanu, makes her a standout at Basich. So Marty, well deserved. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Sally.
And Grant?
Hello again, everybody. I would like to just say a few words about Jill Kleema, our Kent-Credentialed Golden Bell recipient this year. Jill, it's been such an absolute pleasure to work with you. It's been quite a journey over the last two years. And from the first moment that we met to talk about the math department, the approach to math instruction in Kent, the role that you play as both a teacher and now as the instructional leader of the Curriculum Department. It's just been such a fantastic experience working with you and understanding what works and how we can get better. And it really has been a journey that you should be proud of as we have just recently adopted a new curriculum in mathematics, 6th through 8th grade, and are starting the process of training and understanding how to bring this excellent work for the kids. And I just can't imagine having it done with any more skill, expertise, calm patience, and humanity to listen to all of the people that were involved in that difficult process and decision. And I think that I speak for our community when I say, you know, you were able to bring people, including everybody on this call that I can see their faces right now, to consensus around this being the right choice for our students in our district. And for that, I just have to really applaud your efforts and so thankful to be working with you. And my favorite phrase that the Kent staff chose for you at the Golden Bell Ceremony was a fashionable leader. Because you are a leader and you're fashionable and you lead with fashion. Whatever that means, you figured out how to do it. And I just, I appreciate our partnership and love seeing you on the morning runs occasionally. Look forward to many, many more years together, hopefully in person at school.
Thank you, Grant.
And Lisa Sandberg?
Hi again. Okay, Kleema, you kill it. You kill it at teaching. Can I just say, I love your passion. And you think of the whole student and every student and want the best for everybody. And when you say that you need to get in to talk to Grant, I know what you mean. I know you do. And you just, you give it your all every, every single day. And I'm so glad you're going to be the Math GLC again. I so enjoy working with you. Congratulations on the Golden Bell.
Thanks, Lisa.
And Methany?
Here we go. I'm not muted anymore. Okay, congratulations to Jill. I don't know you, but you sound really awesome. Congratulations to Marty Ross. We adore you and our kids are so lucky to have you as their teacher. You are so creative and kind and warm and a true advocate for all of your friends that come to your class. And everybody loves Hanu also. So it's just a wonderful combination to have you both together. So thank you for all that you do. It's well deserved. And for my friend Gretchen Harris, I'd like to speak about her because she has been such an integral part of the Basich family. And Gretchen, that's Eva says, wow, wish to go as well. Sorry. I just want to tell everybody that Gretchen Harris goes above and beyond in the work that she does at Basich. You are there first thing in the morning to supervise kids. You work so diligently with your team in the 2nd grade to ensure that kids have what they need to access curriculum. You are there at lunch to provide supervision and support on the yard. You are our leader for resolution team in, you know, teaching kids, teaching our 4th graders how to help solve problems on the yard. And that is just the beginning of teaching children how to be upstanders and change makers in our world. And especially now, it's so important. Anytime I need you, sorry about Eva. Anytime I need you for anything, I text you and you say yes. And you probably should say no sometimes, but you always say yes. You're there to help us. I can't even, I mean, you know what you do. And I think everybody at Basich appreciates every big and little thing that you do for us. So thank you, thank you. You deserve this honor and recognition.
Thank you. Thank you.
Roseanne joining?
Hello?
Gretchen.
Hi. Congratulations to all of the Golden Bell winners. And I just wanted to say to Marty, on behalf of the 2nd grade team, we love working with you and collaborating with you this year as a grade level coordinator. I've learned so much from you. You bring such creativity into the classroom, always great to bounce ideas. And you're all, one thing that comes to mind when I think about Marty is that she's always thinking of other people and just brings such a great warmth and sunshine to our school community. And she's always, always thinking about what's best for kids and pushing us as colleagues. And so for that, on behalf of the 2nd grade team, too, we're super duper grateful. And then Gretchen, can you guys hear me? This is, okay, okay. I get nervous on Zoom. Gretchen, from Cass and I are so lucky and grateful to have the opportunity to work with you over the past few years. I could sense a cry. You have such a beautiful way of helping all kids feel seen and heard. And you're always just such a joy when you come into the classroom. I didn't know how this can get so emotional. And you bring such a joy and laughter to our classroom. And Cass and I are just truly grateful and for all that you do for Basich School. So congratulations, Golden Bell Award winners. You guys represent Kent field in such a beautiful way. I'm honored to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you, Lindsay.
And Brad, you're up.
Thank you. Congratulations, Marty. And congratulations to you, Gretchen. Wonderfully done, well deserved. And I just want to say to Kleema, it is a privilege and a pleasure and a joy to work with you on a daily basis. I couldn't ask for more in a colleague, honestly. You know, you are made out of steel. There is no adversity that you have not been able to overcome. It's inspirational to know you as a friend. I am so thankful that you are chairing our department. You do it wonderfully with a level of calm that it far exceeds anything I would be able to do. So, and I just think this award is incredibly well deserved. And know that every day, I am thankful that when I do get to come to school and I get to see you there. So thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
And Heidi?
Hi. Hey, Jill.
Hey, Heidi.
Congratulations to all of you. Jill, do you remember when I told you you were crazy to teach math?
I do.
So I just want you to know, you are like the dream teacher. You make math seem doable even for the kids that lack all confidence. You talk to students with respect. You inspire them to learn. You're caring. You have empathy. And so much so that kids really seek you out for comfort and guidance. We know that both in and out of class, which is amazing. In fact, you sort of have a following, I think. And more recently, during distance learning, you have gone above and beyond to reach out to students that have seemed unreachable, hours and hours and hours that you've invested in supporting your kids. You check in with them. You provide whatever supports they need, so much so that they can reconnect with their learning. And above and beyond everything, you're a humanitarian. Kids and adults feel safe with you. I can't express how much I appreciate, respect, admire you as a math teacher and as a human. Not that math teachers aren't humans, but I just adore you and think the world of you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Heidi. Thank you.
And Noah? Hey, guys. This is Noah Wheeler, a parent of 2nd grader who's been lucky enough to have Mrs. Ross as a teacher. So I just wanted to quickly say congratulations to Mrs. Ross. You have this unique ability to really connect with each student. I mean, I'm imagining it's not just my boy. I know my boy's special, but I know you do this with all your students. And you really have this amazing ability to find that, you know, each kid's spirit and where they're coming from. And it's just, I can't tell you how much it's meant to us as a family. And Jesse's grown so much this year. So definitely well deserved. So congratulations. And also just an example of how Mrs. Ross goes above and beyond is she jumped on board with my wife and helped coordinate the talent show this year and put in a lot of effort. And it was just such a great way to end the year, to see all of the kids be able to show their talents and watch each other. And Mrs. Ross had a big part in that. So thanks, thanks so much. And congrats.
Thank you so much, Noah. Thank you for doing the talent show.
Heather, I don't have any other hands up.
Great. Okay, Julie Gallagher. "My dear friend Jill, my sole sister in teaching. What a fitting honor to recognize all that you are. Your brains, your empathy, your sense of humor, and yes, your style all make you an exceptional educator who I am proud to call friend. We shared countless hours together when I started at Kent. You were the calm leader with a respected voice. I admire the way you have led this math team and all that you do with and for kids. Love you." Okay, and this one's from Catherine Mengy. "Miss Ross, congrats to a very dedicated teacher. We are so grateful that you taught our daughter Georgia and your absolute love of teaching children shows." This is from Thalia Milano. "Marty, I love teaching with you in 2nd grade. Your love of learning and willingness to try new things is truly inspiring. Thank you for sharing your gifts with the students at Basich." And from Eileen Braff, "Marty, the students are so lucky to have you as their teacher. You go above and beyond for them. Well deserved." And from Lynn Bartha, "Gretchen, when I joined Basich, you were a parent volunteer helping with lunch duty and you had Miss Chesney on your back. I cannot tell you how much I enjoy working with you. And I also know you are my go-to when I need something in a pinch. Thank you for all you do for our most needy students and families. We are all so incredibly fortunate to work with you and I look forward to working together again in the fall. You are the best." Capitalize, capitalized best. And from Sally, wait, did I just lose this? Oh, no. Sally. "Gretchen, if there's anyone who wears multiple hats and wears them well, it's Gretchen. From parent to paraprofessional, to green team leader, to office support, you do it all and you do it so well. Thank you, Gretchen." From Julie Gallagher, "More for Jill. Did I mention that you are a warrior and a hero and that I love you? I quite literally am raising a glass to you and to all the Golden Bell recipients tonight." And this is from Lisa Gleeb. "How lucky we are, Mrs. Kenashiro for 1st grade and Mrs. Ross for 2nd grade. Mrs. Ross connects with the kids in a way that makes them all feel seen, smart, and special. Ryan is a better kid and a better learner because of you. Congratulations and thank you." And from Maya, Gretchen, "Another one who makes my job easier. You are Superwoman, all caps. Adore you." And I think that's it from the chat feed. Great. Congratulations to everyone on your Golden Bell awards.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Moving forward, the next part of our meeting is the recognition of newly tenured staff. I don't know if, Liz, you'll be doing that?
Yeah. So what I'd like to do is, let me just do this first. I'm going to put everybody back to attendee. And I'm going to read the names of all of the staff members who are being tenured. And then if people would like to say something about them and if they're here, I'll put them on the screen. If you want to say something about them, just go ahead and raise your hand and David will start feeding people onto the screen. And then we'll get all of the accolades done. So our honorees are Erin Early from the Learning Center at Basich, Mary Ellen Gore, PE teacher at Kent, Amber Hatfield, our English Language Development and English Learner Specialist, Farah Mazanov, lately of 4th grade at Basich, soon to be 7th grade science at Kent, Margie Rogers from the Learning Center at Kent, and Laurel Irin, our school nurse. So let me go find them and see if they're here. Here's Erin. And Mary Ellen. Yep. And Amber. No Amber. Okay. Let's see if Farah is here. Yep. And Margie. Nope. And Laurel. Laurel, I don't see you. Oh, yeah, there you are. Okay. If Margie or Amber's here, please raise your hand and I'll catch you at the top. Okay, hi, everybody. Welcome and congratulations on getting tenure in the district. So happy for you. We're going to have people talking about you. So get ready to feel proud. Proud, that's what you feel. Grant, you're on. Oh, sorry, Sarah, go.
It's okay. If you want to let Grant go first, that's fine.
It doesn't matter to me.
So congratulations to everyone getting tenure in the district. I have to say a special congratulations, though, to Farah because I have known her now for eight-plus years and watched all the hard work that went into getting the teaching credential, starting as a teacher and now getting tenure. And so I just want to say, congratulations. You bring a passion to teaching and a commitment to your students and a diligence that I've seen in you from day one in doing the very best you can, working incredibly hard to do better and better every day. And I admire that so much about you. And I know you're going to have great success in the future and just want to say, congratulations. It's very well deserved.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Your support has meant a lot to me.
All right. Well, it's so great to see everybody. I'd like to start by wishing Mary Ellen, congratulations. Mary Ellen, it's been such an honor to welcome you to the Kent PE team. And as we've discussed on many, many occasions, I am so proud of our Physical Education Department at Kent in the way that you see kids and you reach kids and you understand kids and you treat them in a way that really values their health and their wellness. And I believe that our kids genuinely feel that. And so when we welcomed you to the team, it was almost immediate that we all... And so, when we welcomed you to the team, it was almost immediate that we all just recognized the strengths that you contribute and that you really just rounded out our PE department in such a balanced way. And I so appreciate your many skills that you contribute to our team. And I hope that our partnership lasts years and years into the future. So, congratulations on this great accomplishment.
Thank you so much Grant, that means a lot.
And I would like to say that Laurel has also been a fantastic addition to the team. Sally has some prepared remarks that we, that I contributed to, but while I have the stage for a moment, I would just like to say Laurel, it is such a breath of fresh air when you come into the office and help us with a wide variety of things related to your expertise that none of us have. And as we venture into the unknown future, I think you know that we'll be leaning on that expertise perhaps more heavily than we ever have before. And I couldn't be more confident in the skills that you'll contribute to leading us through success and health and wellness into the future. And...
Thank you Grant, thank you so much.
You're very welcome Laurel. And lastly, I would say Farah, you have earned tenure from your work at Basich. And as many people know and was just shared, you'll be transitioning to Kent next year. And so, we'll welcome you as one of our newest Falcons to the nest. And it will be a year of transition for us all. And I recognize it'll be a big year of transition for you. And I'm just very excited to welcome you to the team and to get to work with Planning for the Future. So, congratulations Farah.
Thank you so much, I'm really excited to join Kent.
And Sally, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd like to just go down and talk about those who have touched our lives at Basich. I'll start with Farah since I see her here on the screen. Farah, wow, I remember you coming into my office, I don't know, seven years ago and saying, Sally, I think I want to be a teacher. And how do we go about doing this? And Farah, look at you now, you are truly a gifted educator, teacher extraordinaire. I couldn't be happier that you are staying in our district and going to continue doing amazing things for children. You're one of the most organized people I have met and your ability to think so linearly with the kids and the work that you do is just outstanding. So, Farah, I'm so grateful you're staying with us. Congratulations. I'd like to just speak to Erin Early for a moment. Erin joined us and stepped into some big shoes to cover after one of our talented longstanding teachers left the Resource Lab at Basich. But Erin has brought a calm and a reassurance. And it's just what our families appreciate when they are navigating some academic challenges for their children. So, she has really lent herself to be a central member and a valued member of the Basich team. So, Erin, thank you so much. And Laurel, we did write this together. You are a gal who jumps in with both feet. You do two schools and you make it look so easy. Your calm and our ability to trust you and respect the work that you do really is something that we need now more than ever. And we're so glad that you are in the place that you are with us now because you are exactly the kind of woman that we need right now in our district. So, for the past and the future Laurel, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Sally.
I know Amber isn't here, but Amber Hatfield, but if I might just say something very quick about Amber. Amber came to us from the Nevada School District. Their big loss, our huge gain. Amber has been, she is our EL teacher, district EL coordinator, truly passionate woman about the work that she does. She's built strong lasting relationships with our staff, our students, and our parents who speak many different languages. She was instrumental in putting a device in each one of our students' hands this summer and working with them to be sure that these children were set up for success in their distance learning program. And she is a gal who cares about children in a way that is just exactly what we want in our school district. So, I'm very proud of all the people who are staying on with us. Thank you.
And Methany?
Thank you. I want to acknowledge Erin Early as well, Sally, and just, I've had the privilege of working with Erin for the past two years. And she does come with such a wealth of knowledge and she's such a team player and I can go to her for any questions and advice. So, I really appreciate her and I'm really happy that she is tenured and a part of our team. Amber Hatfield also, wow, she, I mean, I think, I think she's blown all of our minds just in that, all that she does and her true passion and commitment to our families to ensure that they have what they need to succeed at school. And Ms. Laurel, I love you so much. Thank you for just coming into our family just so seamlessly and providing all the support that we needed. And I feel like you are, you've been so approachable and so easy to talk to. And I really value you and respect you greatly. So, thank you for your service and I'm glad you'll be part of our family for a long time.
Thank you.
And Ms. Mazanov, I have a long history with Ms. Mazanov. I had Cameron in my class a long time ago. And I do remember as a teacher and her as a parent, just kind of talking about becoming a teacher. And I am so glad that you took this path and you followed, you know, your instinct because you are such a natural. And I know that behind the scenes, you work so, so hard. And you put your whole heart and your whole soul into everything that you do with your kids and for your kids. And you truly, truly want the best for them, from everything that you do online to what you've done before, to your silkworm videos. You know how I feel about animals and all of that. And we've had some very funny stories together, so I won't show those now. But I just, I'm so proud of you and all that you've done. And I'm proud of you for moving on to Kent. And Grant, you are so lucky to have a new Falcon join your team because Farah is above and beyond a most spectacular teacher. You will only be amazed and not disappointed.
Thank you so much, Methany.
I wanted to just say something as well. So, Erin, little known fact, I don't know, I don't think somebody already said this. Erin was an instructional assistant in room three at Kent and went off to get her credential and worked in Mill Valley for a while. And we got her back as fast as we could. So, Erin, you, it's been a pleasure watching your career blossom and I'm so glad that we are the, I hope you're last stop. Mary Ellen, as I've told you before, I've never read a letter of recommendation that used the word perfect so many times. And I thought, can't be, can't be true, although I did know the recommender. And she was not someone prone to hyperbole. So, I thought, hmm, this is, this is something. But apparently she was being perfectly honest. And we're so glad you came to Kent Field from our Sonoma County and I enjoyed when I saw you on the train. Amber, what's been said about Amber, I would just double down on. Amber is a force of nature and we are, our families are really lucky to have her in their lives. Farah, little known fact about you probably is how well, how much time you have devoted to getting our students off campus safely in the event of an emergency. You and your partner Anna Lynn have created a system that, you know, it's, it's a system I hope this, the district never has to use, but it is so much better than what we had before. I know we'll have a better, much better experience if we ever do. And you gave of yourself selflessly to do that and I really, really appreciate it. And I'm so glad you've found, I, I think you're going to be an amazing science teacher and I hope someday you can get the sound of silkworms eating mulberry leaves out of your head because I know what that sounds like. And it's like the stuff of a horror movie. Margie, we, Grant and I did our first hire together with Margie. The summer he started in the district and hauled him in and said, we got to hire somebody. And we found Margie and we were so lucky because it was a part-time position, late hire. And I think, you know, that was an enjoyable time. I think she's done really well since then. And Laurel, you just don't, we don't get, I mean, nobody finds a school nurse like you. School nurses are rare as hen's teeth these days and especially great ones. And when you walked in, I thought, okay, the universe keeps smiling on us. And, and you, you know, you're just that, no nonsense, I love it. And you say things that are so gross and just like without flinching and expect everyone to just get over it. And I, I think that's great. And as, as has been said, your leadership into this, this time of, you know, hypersensitivity around hygiene is going to be, is, I'm so, I feel so relieved that the district is in your very clean and often washed hands. So, thank you for being here.
I wonder what I said that was so gross though.
Nurses just do it and they don't, see, you don't even know. It's not gross to you. So, I'm done.
Grant?
I neglected to, to mention Margie because I didn't see her face in front of me, so I'm sorry about that. But I would like to just say, Liz, I do remember hiring Margie together. And it's been such a joy to welcome her to the Kent team. You know, she's incredibly flexible and beyond the, the, the part-time schedule that she's pieced together to support case management at Kent, she also took on math intervention this year and did so with just the most passionate commitment to the kids. And it was always about, what are we going to do to help the kids meet the, what are we going to do to meet the kids' needs and how are we going to get creative? And it was beyond her ed specialist work and beyond her case management work. But the time she committed to it was just astounding with great outcomes. And lastly, I'll just say, she started bringing me almond joys in my office in this little jar. It was the sweetest thing. She came up to me and said, you know what Grant, I just, I see the way that you work and I feel like perhaps sometimes you need to take a little break and have a little bit of joy. And it's, so I kid you not, I was in my office yesterday and there was one almond joy in the mason jar. And I was, as I was leaving, I grabbed it and I ate it. And I was, I was about to take a picture of the empty jar and send it to Margie. And then I thought, well, then she's going to think I expect more. So, I'm glad she's not listening. I just want to say that that's the kind of person that she is. She sees what people, people need in their lives and she subtly and gently provides it for them. So, anyhow, thanks to, to everybody for allowing me to have this time and congratulations to our newly tenured teachers.
Heather, I don't see any more hands up, but you've got some chats.
Definitely things, yes, in the chat feed. Let me start back. I'm from Davina, Amber, thank you for your work supporting our EL students and families. Your leadership has been such an amazing asset for our community. From Donalyn Heller, congratulations Farah, well deserved, very happy to hear this news. From Jenny Walsh, oh, didn't want to lose that. I'm sorry, let me go back. Oh my gosh. I need my text.
I've got it, I've got it. From Jenny Walsh, congratulations Mary Ellen, you are a wonderful addition to the PE department and the entire Kent staff. It's an honor to work with you. Do you have it back Heather, or you want me to keep going?
I do, yes. From Davina, Farah, you have transformed my house into a silkworm pond. Even though neither of my kids are your students, you have given something so positive and amazing to focus on during such a difficult time during school closure. You always respond to Asher's countless emails of desperation around how to care for his worms. I think they will remember their silkworms more than anything else about this time. From Jenny Walsh, Laurel, congratulations, I could not do my job without you. We are so lucky to work with you at Kent. From Jocelyn Christensen, congratulations Farah, I'm so happy you'll be staying in the district and looking forward to Luke having you for science in a few years. And I think that's it. All right, congratulations to all of our newly tenured staff. Okay, transitioning into recognition of departing staff. Do you want to take this, Liz, with site administrators? And I think you may still be on mute.
Yes, I'm just, let's see, clearing the decks. Okay, so we've got the administrators and we've got you all and me. Okay, great. So, we'd like to take this moment to thank and recognize the staff who are leaving our school district for all the reasons and that, all the variety of reasons. And let me start, I'm going to list all of their names. And one of, Grant or Sally, why don't you start talking about any of them that you want to and I'll start letting them into the, to the panel. So, we have Melina Akow, Methany Bozeman, Marty Daniker, Diane Darrow, Alexandra Durseneo, Tina Perdices, Kelly Steers, Chrissy Stalker, and Fran Yang. So, I'm going to start opening up there so that we can see them as you start to talk.
Sally, would you like to take the lead or would you prefer that I start?
Sure, I, I'm happy to step in Grant, thank you. Let's see here, let me start with Melina. Melina works with our, in our special education program. And I think Melina has one of the most challenging and the most rewarding job in our school. Melina shares every day with us in her actions how much she cares about her small group of students. And I want to say that her new school, which is closer to her home, is very fortunate to have her joining them. So, congratulations and good luck, Melina. The next person I'll chat about is Tina. And Tina Perdices was, with us as our school psychologist for a year. And we were so grateful to benefit from her calm, her extensive wisdom in the field of psychology, her excellent ability to write up her reports for people to understand. She has shared her expertise with us and I know that she's headed down the peninsula to a very large school district, quite different than Basich. But Tina, good luck and we will miss you as well. Um, Fran, Fran, oh my goodness, Fran Yang. Fran was at Basich for many years and then she went away to Michigan to live for a while. And then she came back to Basich. And there wasn't a teaching job for Fran and all of her colleagues. And I was pretty new to Basich and I, they were all talking about this amazing teacher, Fran Yang. And she slipped into a paraprofessional role because there wasn't a teaching role for her. And I have to say that over the years that I have worked with Fran, she has held multiple jobs from paraprofessional to teacher extraordinaire to math coach, science coach. And by default, this last year, Fran stepped into cover for one of our teachers who had to go out on medical leave. She's, in addition to doing the job that she was responsible for, without any noise, Fran stepped into his shoes to do the make, take over the maker job. She was our STEM teacher. And she also became our technology expert. Fran, no job, no request that administration or a colleague ever made for you, to you, was too big. You did it with a smile, you did it with confidence, and you did it extraordinarily well. Fran Yang, I'm not sure what Basich is going to do without you, but you have been a gem. Thank you Fran Yang. And then lastly, I'll talk about my partner. When Katie Ward left us, I wasn't quite sure where we were going to find a talented administrator to step in with such a short amount of time to find someone. But she was right there in the mix. Methany Bozeman was teaching kindergarten at that point in time. We, our first year together was in that 12 by 12 office space that served multiple purposes. Our desks were literally side by side. But despite the complexities and the stress of that year when we were building, we all had to park off campus and there was lots of dust and noise. It was probably one of my very favorite years as principal at Basich. Methany has been a quick study with a quick wit. Math, your organizational skills and your tech skills have made me look so good when I never deserved it. Partner, you are on to great things with those middle schoolers who are waiting for you down in Belmont Redwood Shores. This is just the beginning of a lifelong friendship, Methany, and I am so, so grateful for our time together. Thank you, Matt.
Heather, let me just ask if anybody else is in the attendees who is being honored right now, if I need to, I can't, I don't, no other names are showing up that are like recognizable. So, if anybody's kid's name is on their account or something like that and I don't know you're here, please raise your hand so I can let you in. In the meantime, you have your hand raised, David.
Here's Judy Anne. Judy Anne, you're unmuted.
Thank you. I would like to recognize Fran. Fran, you will be so missed by the students and staff at Basich. You are brilliant, innovative, creative. You are brilliant, innovative, creative, and inspiring. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that you have done to make math exciting, fun, and engaging. Congratulations on your new job. You will be so missed.
And Susan Warnock?
Am I unmuted?
You are.
This message is from Methany. Methany, on behalf of KTA, we wish you the best of luck in the next step of your career. We are grateful for all your contributions and dedication during your years at Basij. May your new position bring you much happiness and fulfillment. Your new school is very lucky to have you and our loss is their gain. I will personally miss your ready smile, your sense of humor, and your quick laughter. I enjoyed working with you. You will be missed by us all.
Thank you, Susan. Um, I'd like to say a few things. So I'd like to say, Melina, you have shown in this time of distance learning, you never skipped a beat and your students were all so lucky to have you guiding them through this time away. You, you made it look effortless and I really commend you for that. I also would like to just call out your very eloquent and heartfelt messages to me and others around racial justice and equity. You are an amazing writer and, uh, your points are so well taken and I really appreciated the time you took to share those with me. And I believe you're going to all of elementary, is that correct? In the photo, one of my very closest friends is the principal, so just give her a hard time. That's, that would be my recommendation. She's amazing. Her name is Elizabeth, too, but that's just coincidental. So, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Kids were in great hands with you. Methany, we met when we first came into the district. We were the newbies. Um, our, my predecessor had a, a, a habit of meeting with the new teachers and I happened to be there the day Methany came in to meet. I don't even think she, Mary Jo was there for some reason. Anyway, we chatted and I thought, oh, she's so great. And then I had the pleasure of being in your classroom occasionally and seemed like John was always, he always had this helper. And then you made jewelry and then you were like, uh, ready to go to be our assistant principal and that scroll never ends. And, um, it's just, I, I just can't wait to see where you go. I mean, you're just, you are on the path and you are so good at what you do just innately. We didn't have much to teach you, but boy, I, I blocked out that whole little office thing. That, that brought back lots of memories, you guys talking about that. So, let's just stay in touch. Uh, I wanted to say goodbye to Mari Daniker. Mari is, it has, is in the district office. She's our, um, human resources specialist and, uh, the lady who gets us all paid. Oh, here she is, Mari. You're coming in. Oh, no, 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 stop. Wait a minute, I pushed the wrong button. Here we go. You're coming in. Um, Mari is an amazing mind who keeps so many balls in the air with such grace and such humor and such dedication. Um, you know, it really is, people do get cranky if they don't get paid and they don't get paid right. And so she, she has never let that happen. Um, but there's also this, this plethora of detail she has to keep in so straight around people's leaves and, and family leaves and other kinds of leaves and benefits. And you just, she not, you don't know it. You don't know how hard she's working, but she works like a, a stevedore. And she has, um, found a great place to land at College of Marin in Indian Valley. And, um, Mari, I, I'm so glad I got to work with you and, um, share our lives. And, um, I look forward to seeing, staying in touch with you, of course. Uh, Diane Darrow came to us for just a year from Palo Alto. Um, and I think really was key in helping the district now, in Kent particularly, navigate the early days of distance learning with her technology expertise. So thank you for that. Alexandra Dorsonio, thank you. I don't think she's on this call, but, um, stepped in to help us fill a really tricky position with, uh, science. And, um, we appreciate her efforts in that regard. I'm looking again for her name, but I don't see it. Tina, all similarly, just here for a year. Tina, thank you for your hard work as a, as the psych at Basij. Um, Kelly Steers, I will always remember coming in and, and working with you in your classroom before the start of school last year and, and you gave me the very lovely job of planting your little garden outside your, your classroom and let me letter something, I can't remember what now. Um, but really enjoyed getting to know you a little bit better. You're, you'll, you're going to be fine. You're, you're an amazing teacher. I love your messages to kids that I see. Um, and Christie Stalker, um, has been with us for, also came in, filled a really tough, tough slot and has done a phenomenal job. Fran, if you hadn't made me join your running group, I'd like you a lot better. But it was, you know, peer pressure. Now I have a good excuse not to do it for a long time. So tell Winnie, just to leave me alone. But Fran, I think you can do anything. Um, and I think that, um, we, you know, math has been a, a challenging area for, for Kentfield School District. I came in, it's kind of the seven years war, if you think about it. I mean, I've been here for seven years and haven't really, haven't, haven't brokered the ceasefire yet. But I think you have done so much to, um, just elevate the, the conversation at Basij. I think Sally's right. There's nothing you say no to. Uh, and you do everything so amazingly well. And Burks, right?
Yes.
All girls?
Yes.
Well, girl drama, yay. Okay, so that'll be fun. Uh, they will be, uh, they're going to say, what the heck? Why did those people let her go? She, she's amazing. They're going to be very, very, very happy. So good luck to you. I, I, I look forward to reading all about your, your accomplishments.
Thank you so much. You'll have so much more time to run now, though, Liz, so, you know.
Not till my ankle heals and it's going to be a long time. I'm like, you know, old and have osteoporosis probably, I don't know.
Thank you. All my time at Kentfield, I mean, it, it's family to me and always will be. I have my best friends from there and, and my kids, uh, were lucky to go through there as well, so, um, sad to leave, but thank you.
For sure.
Maya, you're unmuted.
Oh, hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Oh, great. I just want to say, Methany, um, I, I just, talking about not crying, you know, I can't imagine having gone through the last couple of years without you. It's been absolutely my honor to be with you in your first couple of years as an administrator. And I feel like you can do anything and you will go so far. And, um, it's just, it's been incredible to see the transformation and, and just the, the learning and the dedication that you have. I mean, when you first started, the first year of Methany as, as an administrator, she was staying at school till six or seven o'clock at night, every single night. And I was like, I'm out of here. I gotta go, you know? Um, and she, she did that and she came in early also. So, you know, it's our, it's our huge loss to lose you and, um, but it's, it's been so wonderful to work with you and I think you're going to come back. You're probably going to come back as like the president of everything. And that's going to be so cool. And Fran, same to you. I mean, I can't imagine our school without you. It's, um, it's just unimaginable. But, um, you know, we're going to do the best we can and, uh, if and when you, if and when we can have you back, it, it's going to be a glorious reunion for both of you, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ma.
Liz, I neglected to, uh, mention Kelly Steers if I might take just a moment. Kelly Steers is, is a parent and, uh, was a parent when I noticed her in our school district from afar. The mom of two wonderful little boys. And last August, I think we were two days before the start of school when we recognized we needed another teacher. And I knew Kelly had been a teacher and I approached her. And she jumped right in with everything she had to get her classroom ready within hours of her second graders arriving. And she has not disappointed me once when I've gone into her room. The calm, the warmth, the professionalism in these hard times. She has, he, she has been just, uh, uh, an outstanding member of the Basij community. So I want to thank Kelly, um, very much.
Heather, I don't see any more, uh, hands up and I think there's some comments in chat.
There's definitely some comments in chat. Um,
I see Grant putting his hand up.
Did you just put your hand up? Oh.
Yeah, I just have, didn't have a chance to comment on our departing staff members, uh, yet. So I just wanted to say a few words, if that's okay. I'll start with those that, that I can, uh, see that are here with us. And, um, maybe I'll go in the order that I met you. Uh, Mari Daniker was nothing but the most incredibly pleasant and welcoming person uh, that I have likely ever had the opportunity to interface in a professional way. So warm, so welcoming, so knowledgeable about a topic that a lot of people don't know a whole lot about, but really rely on it for our livelihood. Uh, it's just been such a pleasure to work with you, Mari. And, um, I just, whether it was a difficult conversation that we were having or just a simple, you know, check in, you have just been nothing but gracious and kind and I so appreciate your expertise in College of Marin. Could not be more fortunate to have you joining their team. I think the next person I likely met that I can see would be Methany Bozeman. And, uh, Methany, one, one of the things I will desperately miss about, um, what you've brought to the administrative team is just the willingness to smile and to have fun and to make jokes. You know, whether it's the ugly sweaters through the month of December or some of our, our, our jokes that I won't go into now that we had running in all of our admin meetings. Um, it, you just brought a lightheartedness and a willingness to laugh even when we were working on really difficult topics. And, uh, that has made this work more enjoyable than I've probably experienced anywhere else. And I just, I hope that you fall in love with middle school, just like I've fallen in love with middle school. And it may hopefully make sense to you soon why middle school people are middle school people through and through. So welcome to the team and please know that I will always be here to help with any advice or questions. And I don't have all the answers, but I certainly can listen and just share any thoughts that might be helpful. So thank you so much for the partnership, Methany, and good luck. And Fran, I wish that, that we got to know each other better, but the interactions that we did have were nothing but incredibly helpful. I'd send you an email about math intervention programs and get back links and pamphlets and brochures and contact information for representatives. It's just like a wealth of knowledge about all areas that were under your purview. And I just, I know from speaking to staff members at Kent that work closely with you at Basij and, and, and in other arenas, that you just have a high level of professionalism and expertise. And I just wish you the very, very best. And I would like to say, uh, about the, the members that are leaving, that I don't believe are on the call. Diane Darrow and, and, and I had the opportunity to work together before she joined Kentfield and she's heading back to Palo Alto next year. And I'd echo what Liz said, that when we went and transitioned into, uh, distance learning, that her expertise in ed tech and just all things technology integration really shined. And she supported many staff members in, in upping their game and getting connected with, with what appeared to be relative ease. So we will, we will be in her debt for what she, uh, contributed to our school closure approach. And, um, who could have ever seen that coming? I'm so thankful that Diane was on our team. For Christie Stalker, she joined us, uh, in the middle of the year in a, in a class situation that desperately needed some stability and some focus and a commitment and determination. And Christie absolutely embodied each of those attributes and more and really led to a successful conclusion of the year and a very successful year of sixth grade core for the students in her charge this year. So thank you so much for Christie. And Alex Dorsonio also joined in the middle of the year. It was this year and it was a seventh grade science class that also needed stability and expertise. And we appreciate what Alex contributed to our team for the time that she was with us this year. So thank you to everybody who is here and being celebrated and I wish you the very best, uh, going forward.
Great. Um, and can I go into the chat feed? Um, David, are there any more hands up?
Uh, Methany wanted to say something.
Oh, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Bethany.
Yes, I just wanted to say, um, thank you to Melina. It was a pleasure to work with you. Um, you definitely teach from your heart and from a very warm and loving place. And I'm sorry that you are leaving Basij, but I know that you will bring your love and expertise in teaching to your new school. Um, Mari, you've always been so kind and loving and so easy to work with. And I appreciate that anytime we needed anything or had a question, you were always there to help us out. So thank you so much to Mari. And Kelly Steers, I think the world of you. I know that you are such an advocate for the students in your class. And, um, you, you came into the job, um, very last minute and you really showed us that you could do it. And you're such an amazing teacher and I wish you all the best of luck. And to my dear, dear friend, Fran Yang, I can't even talk to you, my sister from another mister. So I'm not going to go there right now because we're friends for life and I just love you dearly. And you have brought so much, um, love to math and science and tech and all things wonderful to our students. And you really opened that, that door to our kiddos and, and to our staff. They really have looked to you for guidance and, um, you're really just the, the knower of all things, the wisdom holder. So we love you and Burks is so lucky to have you. And I'm looking forward to having a meal with you here in the city soon.
I can crash at your place.
Great. Um, all right, David, if you don't see any more hands, I'll go to the chat feed.
I don't. Oh, I see Alisa Rubels showing up. Hold on. Lisa, you have to unmute yourself.
Sorry. Hi. I want to make this just really short and express my deep gratitude to Methany Fran and Christie Stalker, all of whom I got to work with, um, who made my children's lives better. And, and were just such amazing teachers, touchstones for my children in their experience. And I miss each of you really deeply already. Um, and please stay in touch with our school and if there's ever an opening, come back, please. Because you, you just, you make our school our school. I, I can't imagine life without you. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Great. Um, thank you, Lisa. Okay, so I'm going to go into the chat feed and I just want to start off with, um, there was one from Gretchen. I didn't want to leave this off, um, from Laurel. For Laurel, I'm so fortunate to have had the opportunity to work with you. Our students are in amazing hands. I agree with a no-nonsense approach. The students and families are on their way to healthier lives. From Jan Cannon, Fran, you are a gem indeed. I will miss you, Jan. Oh, no. Um, this, uh, okay. Um, from Lynn, Methany, from third grade to kindergarten and then to AP, I have very much enjoyed watching you grow in your time at Basij. I will miss our very early morning chats along with hearing your amazing laugh always coming from your office. You will be missed so much at Basij and I wish you nothing but happiness in the role you'll be taking on at your new school. And this is from Tracy Knott, Methany, you will be missed. I will miss seeing your holiday sweaters and the sweet treats you would bring to our meetings. From Teresa Chang, we will miss you, Fran and Methany. From Jan Cannon, Methany, I will miss you so much. Can't wait to hear about all your adventures. I will always listen for your laugh and see your beautiful smile, Jan. From Heather Snyder, these are hard goodbyes. Amazing colleagues, amazing collaborators, and amazing friends. From Nancy Kenashiro, Fran, how can so much fun, creativity, wisdom, and kindness be rolled up into one special person? No one has done more for curriculum at Basij than you. Thank you for always being there for all of us with your wonderful lessons, fantastic advice. Enjoy. advice, joyful spirit. We will miss you so much. Berks is so lucky to have you. From Patty Martinez, Mari, my partner in crime, what am I going to do without your ready smile and quick wit? I will miss you. For Maureen Molten, Mari, we are going to miss you. You are a joy, and I have so enjoyed working with you. I've never known anyone that smiles and laughs so much. We love you. Please stay in touch. From Sally Peck, Mari, always willing to help with the smile on her face and a door that is open to all of us who fly through the office with the situation that needs solving now. Oh, my gosh. Thank you. And I think that is it. Oh, no, I think there's, did I see anyone else? Am I making sure?
Yeah, there's a few more. I can see them.
Oh, you can see more? Okay, great. Yeah, mine stops there.
I'll keep going. Okay. From Talia Milano, Methany, you are the absolute best. We will miss you so much. From Teresa Chang, please come back. From Nancy Kenashiro, Methany, I love the way you light up a room with your bright smile and positive spirit. You have a magical way of making everyone feel special and loved. Thank you for everything you did to make Basich a joyful place to work. We are going to miss you so much. From Marty Ross, Kelly Steers, you have held our second grade team together through distance learning. You're a competent and gifted teacher. We can't lose you. From Melina Cowell, Kelly Steers, it has been an honor to work with you. You are a skilled educator with a heart of gold. Thank you for everything. And from Carrie Becky, we love you so much. Thank you, Fran and Methany, for all of the hard work and effort to make our school fun and dynamic. Go get them, ladies. Oh, wait, one more. From Pearson Starzak, heartfelt appreciation to Mahdi. I will miss you.
Beautiful tributes. Thank you to all of you. And yes, I think that's it for this recognition. Thank you to you all. And now we're going to transition into, I'm looking at the time, it's 7:18. We are behind on our schedule, but I want, I think, do I'm going to take a quick poll among fellow board members? Is it time for a bio break? Or do we want to forge on?
Do you want to do the PTA and KIC acknowledgements and then do it? So that whole thing is wrapped up?
Yeah, I think that sounds fair if everyone's okay with that. Perfect. Okay, so this is recognition for PTA President Erica Applestein, and also recognition of KIC co-presidents, Kira and Dirk Hallameyer. But I should say upfront that both of this whole group will be serving again, if that's correct. And we are very overjoyed to hear that, to say that. So we'll have a chance to do this again next year. But of course, if anyone would like to offer any accolades or recognition, please come forward and raise your hand. David, I'm calling on you.
So the voice of experience speaking, hats off to the Hallamiers for steering a ship at a challenging time. So thank you very much. You're doing it with grace and intelligence and a longer strategic vision, which I think is great. And we're very, very fortunate to have you guys at the helm and continuing for another year. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Many thanks, everybody. Sarah?
So first, I want to echo the thanks to the Hallamiers for doing an awesome job in challenging times and continuing to provide insightful feedback and thoughtful discussions for the parent community, to the board. You are valued members of this community, and I really appreciate everything you're doing, not just fundraising for KIC, but as part of a dialogue to how we can improve our district. So thank you for that. I also want to appreciate Erica, at least quickly as well, because I got to know her doing the Parcel Tax Campaign. And I don't think I've ever met a kinder, calmer human being than Erica. She is steady under the roughest of seas and always a positive light, always looking for ways to improve the situation she's in to help educate people. And we're just, I say it all the time, we are so lucky in this community. We have so many wonderful people donating time and effort to continuing to improve our schools. So thank you to the Hallamiers and to Erica.
And I would say I have had the privilege of working with so many great KIC presidents and with PTA presidents. And I feel so happy for the district that all of you will be continuing on next year. But you know, the crucible of these past 12 weeks really has honed the leadership and of many of you, including the three of you. Erica, I would say, you know, your dedication to all of our families, all of our children has been a true beacon, a shining light that started before quarantine, but has really come, has become so apparent, has become so powerful in quarantine with the buddy families and the lunch program. And you're just, you know, you, as well as the Hallamiers, are the right people at the right time. Kira and Dirk, I would say, you know, you were handed a tough gig this year. This has not been easy, but you've made it work. And you know, the auction was successful, and you do this with a smile on your face. People want to, people want to work for you, and that's leadership. And you have not let this daunting situation sort of dampen that light, that, you know, we're like moths to your flame. So I think it's incredible that y'all are going to be doing this again next year. I feel really, really happy for Raquel and the board and the administration because you are, your leadership is, you know, part of the fabric of the district. Thank you.
Can I say something? I want to say that really we are doing this too because we have this kind of team in place. We have all of you guys, and we have our, you know, of course, our board and Lori and all that. And I also want to say, especially Erica, I feel very lucky that you and I were good friends through our experiences at the school. But Erica, I'm just, I'm psyched that you and I are going to continue to kind of be able to forge ahead a bit hand in hand here, you know, like, and create more community as we go, hopefully, you know? And I think we're off to a pretty good start. And so I'm very grateful to you, Erica, for your leadership and us being able to work together. And all of you on the board.
Yeah, for all you guys, too. Thank you for all you do. Our job is easy compared to yours. So it's a good partnership for us. We appreciate it.
All right, Grant?
I just want to say, I, KIC and the PTA do so much for our Kent Field students. I mean, beyond the amazingness of our children and the expertise of our teachers, I think KIC and PTA come in right behind those two things as the influence in our district that makes it what it is. If you look at just the way that you contribute both funds, but then also just a confidence and enthusiasm around the work that we're doing at our school sites, it's really uplifting. And to see how you've adjusted to the times in this new partnership with the Teacher Grant Program, what a creative way to pool together resources and put them in exactly the right place that they need to be, given the circumstances. I just can't speak highly enough about your adaptability and your partnership and your collaboration and your focus on what's best for kids in our district. It really speaks volumes to your commitment to the right part of the work. And we're maintaining the high level of work that we're doing because of that. So I just have to just extend my sincere appreciations, and I'm really excited to continue this partnership next year and beyond.
Yes, and I'd like to also echo that PTA and KIC. I have often said that our parent volunteers are the oil to our teaching machine. And you surely embody this influence and hard work that stands out. And you're, it's so easy to approach you, and I feel like you're always looking for our ideas. And I very much feel that you are a team partner with us. So thank you so much, Erica, Dirk, Kira. It's been a pleasure to work with you.
Great. Any other hands?
Her hand is up.
Hi, I just wanted to thank you all. It's a great honor for me to be able to serve with you all, and I am just really grateful for the opportunity. So thank you so much. And Kira, thank you for being an amazing partner, and I'm so excited that we're teaming up to do the very best for our kids that we can. So thank you all.
Great. David, do you see any other hands up?
No other hands up.
All right. And this is not because we don't want to say amazing things about all of you, but we're gonna, we'll be able to do that, obviously, next year again, but we cannot express enough appreciation that you will be joining us on this journey for one more year. So thank you. And with that, I think we're going to take a quick five-minute break, if that's okay by everyone here. It's 7:27. Let's say 7:35, we'll be back in action. And then we'll start right back in with public comment. Thanks, everyone. Okay, should we get started again? I think everyone's here, right? All right, 7:35. Let's move forward. We're an hour behind, but we will do our best to catch up. And I appreciate everyone who's been waiting for specific parts of the meeting to occur. As you can tell, we're going to be a little bit behind on this agenda. So with that, let's get started with public comment. And this is the section of the meeting for persons desiring to address the board on matters not on the agenda. The public may direct questions or comments related to school business to the board and the superintendent concerning matters not on the agenda. No action may be taken by the board unless the matter is placed on a subsequent agenda. A person wishing to be heard by the board shall first be recognized by the president and shall then proceed to comment as briefly as the subject permits. Individual speakers shall be allowed three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The board shall limit the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Oh, good. Joan, the floor is yours. Welcome. And you may have mute on.
Heather, is someone going to keep time?
Um, let's see. Liz, oh, perfect. Okay, thank you, Liz. Great. Joan, please.
Well, I'm just so inspired. I'm so inspired. I spent the last hour and a half watching about all of your incredible faculty, and I'm filled with enthusiasm. So, my name is Joan Brown. I've lived in Kenfield since my now 50-year-old son entered kindergarten at Basic. I was a founding member of the original Kenfield Schools Foundation and a regula substitute in the 70s. Thank you for the opportunity to briefly share the schools and communities' first ballot measure. Today, I'm representing the League of Women Voters of Marin County, who along with a large and growing coalition of educators, labor, business, social justice organizations, and local community leaders have been advocating for the passage of the schools and communities' first ballot measure, a measure that will yield billions of much-needed dollars for schools and local communities. This revenue will be collected only from commercial and industrial property owners who will be required to share, pay their fair share of property taxes. Residential property will not be affected by this ballot measure. So, why do we have this problem? Forty years ago, in reaction to rapidly rising property taxes, California's passed Prop 13. It helped homeowners, but the biggest winners have been large commercial property owners. Under Prop 13, property is only assessed when it's sold, and for residential property, that's an average of about 10 years. Commercial properties, especially those owned by big companies like Chevron, Walmart, McDonald's, mostly avoid this reassessment. Properties either don't change hands or owners employ a variety of loopholes to mask title changes. So, how does it work? The Schools and Communities First Initiative provides for reassessment of commercial and industrial property, only commercial and industrial. It requires periodic reassessments of these properties, ensuring that the taxable revenue is at fair market value. There've been a lot of misconceptions and false messages out there. Homeowners and renters will not be affected by this initiative. This can't be said enough. The measure only affects the assessment of commercial and industrial properties. It maintains protections for homeowners and rental residential property as well as for small businesses and agricultural lands. Four quick points that school boards are particularly interested in. Number one, new revenue is additional to all other revenue over and above Prop 98 guarantee. Two, revenue is distributed to schools according to the LCFF. Three, revenue is distributed to communities consistent with the distribution of other property tax revenue. And four, basic aid districts will receive a minimum of $100 per unit of ADA. Community college districts will receive no less than $100 for enrolled FTE students. Finally, Schools and Communities First ensures strict accountability so that taxpayer money goes directly to schools and local communities. So, please review and discuss this initiative amongst yourselves. Then, join the growing and powerful coalition fighting to fund our schools and local communities by closing California's corporate property tax loopholes while protecting homeowners, residential renters, ag lands, and small businesses. The League of Women Voters is asking you to endorse the California Schools and Local Communities Funding Act to create responsible, fair, and long overdue reforms, ensuring California can thrive now and in the future. The League will be happy to come back when you agendize this item. Thank you so much for your time. Did I make the three minutes?
Perfect. Thank you, Joan. And thank you for making the time to attend our meeting and waiting through for an hour. So...
It was my pleasure. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else? Oh, is there two other, is Brad and Annie waiting to address public comment? Perfect. Okay, Brad, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that, I noticed that the AR was on the agenda for this evening, so perhaps my comments would be best spoken then rather than now. Because Heather, from your email, I had the sense that that was when you wanted me to speak about this. So, I just wanted to confirm that. Then I will wait and I will speak during the time we discuss the AR. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Annie?
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes. Great. Thank you.
My name is Annie Sue, and I'm a parent to a kindergartner. I wanted to find out how the district will respond in terms of their commitment towards anti-bias and anti-racism staff trainings. Educators have the responsibility to teach all children equitably, and this can't be a hot topic that disappears in a couple of weeks. I also want to comment on the importance of creating social justice curriculum when school resumes. The kindergarten team, led by Talia Milano, did a really great job creating curriculum in an extremely short amount of time, but this should be done in all classes and grade levels. And the last thing I want to say is, I am really disappointed that three staff who are leaving the district are Asian-American. The district has to commit to hiring more minority teachers and support the non-white staff at our schools. Thank you so much.
Sorry. Thank you, Annie.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? All right. Okay, moving forward. Is there a motion to approve the consent items? Thank you. Quoc, is there a second? David, second. Perfect. Discussion? All right. I have a quick question on the items about the e-waste. Where, I think I've asked this before, Liz, and I just seem to forget. On the e-waste, where do they go when it gets disposed?
I don't know.
This is what I'm referring to, is the technology equipment is declared surplus?
Andrew, I see you're here. Can you answer that question? If I allow you to talk, will you hate me?
Hi. Um, so, we have a mix of approaches. We've the computing devices that we have that no longer work for our purposes but are still functional. We distribute back to the community through the community program. And the other equipment, we usually work with a, work with an e-waste provider, but I'm afraid I cannot remember the name of the firms that we've used in the past. Paul often coordinates that as part of a larger sort of surplus during the summertime. But I do believe that they're certified to be environmentally friendly.
Okay. And I would also be remiss, thank you, Andrew, for that. That, I know that Brad would like to speak about the AR, the Math AR. And Sarah's also has her hand up. Sarah, do you want to speak first?
Sure. So, I don't know if we should pull this from the consent calendar and do everything else first. We have a new version of that AR since our last meeting, and I don't know whether everyone read through and appreciated the revisions. I still would prefer to see us vote for the version that was on the agenda last time as opposed to this version. So, I guess I just want to make sure that everyone understands that there were revisions based on last month's meeting and last month's vote, which is fine, but this isn't the same thing that we talked about last time. So, I don't know if we want to pull it to talk about it more.
Thank you for that clarification, Sarah. I agree that it might be the most efficient use of time if we do pull it and discuss it separately. Is there anyone, if Sarah and I are in agreement, is there anyone else that wants to add in? It has to be by majority, I'm assuming, Liz, to pull it for, and discuss it separately? Or does it just have to be?
I think anybody can say they wanted to pull it, and you can, and you can pull it from that, from consent and talk about it.
Okay. Sarah, does that, are you that person to say you'd like to pull it?
That person.
Okay. Perfect. So, let's pull that one, and we can discuss it later in the meeting.
Heather, we have another hand raised, and I don't know what it's about. If it's about math, may I open? It's Marcus Harrison's, our guest, Marcus Harrison. Can I allow him to speak for a second?
Of course. Yeah.
Hey, Marcus.
Hi.
Hi. Am I, are you talking about math or something we already went past?
No, it's, it's already went past, and it was what was already stated from another parent. I just wanted to just once again reiterate and have some understanding as to why anti-racism issues and Black history isn't covered from all grade levels and why curriculum isn't provided. It just simply like creates more implicit bias, and it's just unfair to all the students.
Yeah. No, thank you for that, Marcus. I know, I know meant to go into public comment. Yeah, and you have full three minutes, Marcus, so you could have gone on longer if you wanted to.
I think that's, it's just very clear there. This is something, especially when you have a child that's Black, that it's not optional, that you have to discuss at home, is a part of core curriculum, a part of American history that needs to be taught. And it's just not fair that this is a public institution where this isn't covered. These resources need to be provided to the, to the staff member, to the teachers, so they can teach this from any grade level and any perspective. If they're not, if they don't have those resources, we are failing the students. And that's, that's all I can say about that.
Thank you. Thank you for making the time to come to our meeting and speak.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Um, okay. So, yes, Davina, go ahead.
I'm sorry. For number three, back to the saying we made the decision to pull that item. So, for instructional minutes, I had a question. And this is number three. And so, there's concern the approval of instructional minutes. And so, I just wanted to, and just make sure that I have the right understanding and everybody. So, given kind of the uncertainty of what instruction will look like, given COVID, when I was reviewing that document, it looks like the same kind of a document that we're always reviewing around the requirements. So, I just wanted to ask Liz, are we holding with the usual process? Or has any other guidance been given around any changes in terms of requirements for instructional minutes?
We haven't heard any changes in instructional minutes. So, it was our decision to put this on the agenda, get it done. If it needs to be amended later in the summer, it can be easily. But we don't, we don't want to miss the deadline for getting it done. It's a, it's a June item. You know, it's kind of a, goes with the budget, goes with the reserve. And we just haven't, we haven't gotten any direction on instructional minutes yet at all.
Okay. Because I know, and when we say instructional minutes, we're talking about, it can be distance learning instructional minutes and in-person instructional minutes in terms of the definition of instructional minutes. Is that correct?
I haven't heard it articulated that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And I just noticed that Brad is also, but I just want to confirm, Brad, these are, these would be questions related to the consent items and not the Math AR, because we pulled that from this consent item list.
Oh.
And that, that's my question. So, are you going to be discussing that this evening? Or are you pulling it from tonight's board meeting?
No, definitely discussing it this evening. It's just...
Great. I will, I will wait until then. Thank you so much.
Okay. No, thank you, Brad.
Heather, do you anticipate it coming right after the vote on the consent calendar?
I think we should, if everyone's in agreement. I think that will be the most efficient.
I was gonna leave Brad here, then.
Okay. Brad's, stay tuned. Okay. So, are there any further questions on the consent items? Okay. Are we ready for vote? All those in favor?
So, yes, I was just gonna have you clarify. So, we're voting on consent items F1 through F6, F.6A.
Exactly.
Is all being approved by this vote?
Yes. Math, the, it's the F6B will be done subsequently after this.
Okay. So, I move, I move to have that chunk approved or to vote on that. Doesn't somebody need to second that vote?
Second.
Perfect. Thank you. I guess we would have to get a separate, moving in seconds from the beginning. Okay. So, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries. Okay. So, now, we're gonna do as a separate item. Let's go back, and I think Brad's still here. Okay. Is there a motion to consider the approval of the revised AR 6142.92, Mathematics Instruction for a Final Reading? Thanks, David. Is there a second? Anyone? Thank you, Quoc. Okay. Perfect. Okay. So, now, we can open this up for discussion. And Brad, why don't we take your comment? I know you've been waiting patiently.
Thank you very much. As you know, I emailed you all earlier this week with my concerns around mathematics, with my concerns around the instruction of having an accelerated program within Kenfield. And with the acknowledgement of the county that having an accelerated program is very much on their minds with regards to how it appears, the slide that they showed, which I found so incredibly troubling, was called "Criteria and Restrictions: Keep Rachel Equity in Mind When Considering Advanced Placement Courses to Be Aware of Unintended Consequences", close quote. Basically, what that meant was their concern was that we would end up with cohorts of all white students, essentially. Right? And it basically comes down to this. We are giving more advantage to those that already have advantage. You tonight were, did a wonderful and beautiful thing, assemble, by having silence for eight minutes and 46 seconds. That is wonderful, and I applaud you for it. But we really need to move beyond symbols. We need to take the next steps if we intend to provide equity in our school. Because otherwise, what we're doing is, as I said to my letter to you, we are stamping children at the end of sixth grade, and they know it, and they're affected by it, and it affects the outcomes of their education, their self-conception. It is not appropriate for their age. It definitely has an effect on mathematics, and it is the only course in which we do this. This cannot be an accident. These are logical fallacies to say that it has to do with someone being bored. I, it's amazing how frequently we hear the refrain, "I want my child to be with their peers." And I wonder if we said that, if we wanted them to be with their peers, if they were to be judged by a jury of their peers, would there only be those made up of students from accelerated math classes? These are children who do not see other children who are free and reduced lunch students, who are special ed students, and quite frankly, children of color. Tonight, you did a beautiful thing, I think, by making a donation on Liz's behalf to the organization that you did, and their mission statement reads, "We believe that the unique experiences of different cultures and socioeconomic backgrounds serves to enhance our larger community. We intentionally give kids of diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds the opportunity to learn, grow, and play together." Why are we denying them? We shouldn't. We should be the school district that leads and is the first school district, much like the first police chiefs willing to kneel, that eliminates these programs and restores equity in our mathematics program. Because if we don't, we are making political decisions, not educational ones. We know this doesn't meet the stated goal of closing the education gap. And I sincerely believe that all of you want to close that gap. I sincerely believe that you are concerned about diversity and equity in our schools. But our actions do not match our words. And quite frankly, they need to. It's just too important not to. Most people do not have the power to do what you all have to do, which is to affect change immediately. Other people can talk, you can actually do. And I encourage you as strongly as I possibly can. After teaching mathematics within this school district for 14 years, I have no doubt that there is no great advantage gained. These children will go to high school, and they will be able to accelerate in math, in language, in arts, in social science, in sciences. Let them wait until they get there. It's too soon. It's too early. Let them be together. More now than ever. We need to build community, not break it apart. And every time we separate children by some supposed ability or whatever it is, we decided we were gonna do away with the separation by gender in our dance classes for PE. Right? That became a very big thing. We did that for dance, because we acknowledged it wasn't a healthy thing. Why would we separate children in mathematics? Just so they can end up in an AP Calculus class, where those with advantage get even more advantage? Where they're able to get college credit if they pass the test, when other children never even come close to having that opportunity? Not to mention the amount of time this takes up from our administrators. I have multiple emails from a family dealing with them, hours spent for just their child. Those hours, in my opinion, would have been much better spent working with children on grade level and below grade level. The children who are accelerated... The children who are accelerating, who are supposedly advanced, they don't lack for advantage. And quite frankly, don't we enhance our children in other places? If you're great at PE, don't you do things outside of PE? If you love computer coding, don't you go to computer coding classes? Wouldn't we be better off doing what the last speaker said and introducing curriculum about the African-American experience and making sure all of our children get this and working with families on, on issues of equity and diversity than we would on selecting 60 kids to be in an accelerated math program? How can we say that we care about closing this gap? I, I just, I, it, it boggles my mind. I was doing the puzzle the other day, and there was a great Shaw quote that I'd forgotten about, which says that all great truths begin as blasphemies. And I'm sure to many people, what I'm saying is a blasphemy to them. But I can assure you that it will be a truth. I don't know that it will be a great one. But we need, we need to have the integrity to unify our community. We need to have our convictions to line up with our words. Our actions need to match our words. And I, I implore you in the strongest terms to please, please, don't do this to children. Be the first and lead. Don't end up like the county worrying about a slide about whether or not the 12 children you've got are all exactly the same.
Okay, Brad, I'm gonna just cut you off there, if that's okay.
Thank you, yes, sorry.
No, no, thank you very much for your input. I did want to circle back to this AR, just to clarify with fellow board members, that what we're looking at tonight is the revised AR based on the comments from a lengthy discussion at our previous meeting. And so just, if there were any questions specifically on the, the additions that were made, and there was a redline version that was sent around from Liz, so you could see exactly where they were, but they were, what we discussed during our last meeting, is there, I, I'd like to just start there to make sure we, we focus our discussion. And where we ended last time, if we recall, was that there was very strong feeling from Grant and from the math department at Kent to make these changes with the addition of Liz as well, which is why I think we're looking at a, a second review of this. So with that in mind, I just want to remind everyone that we did make the changes that were suggested by, again, Grant, the math department, and Liz. So what we're looking at are those changes incorporated. So I, I wanted to part from there in our, our discussions, because I, because I don't know if we have a lot of discussion items, you know, kind of going backwards of where we were before. So is anything kind of going forward? I know Sarah, did you want to comment? I know you've already mentioned that you liked the previous version and not this one.
So I, I should clarify. Towards the end, the language got revised as it relates to mathletes. That revision is fine. The place where I'm concerned is that the revisions to the language around the assessments, it, it, it's putting, and then the, the table that got added, it's putting a requirement, basically, that the students after the assessment end up in the advanced math track and eliminating the option of going into simply a grade level ahead but not part of that advanced track. And I, I don't want to beat a dead horse. Everyone has heard me say about a million times, I would like us to have maximum flexibility to place each individual student where they truly belong based on the math department and the administration's assessment of where they belong. So to me, this feels unnecessarily restrictive. I'm also worried just from a practical standpoint, that the language in this version has, it says that they will be assessed at the end of the grade. I don't know exactly what that means. I would like to see it, say, in the last tech semester or in the last trimester, something that defines the window of time where the assessment will be performed, and the student and their parents can confer with the, with the district or the math department. Because at the end of the year makes it sound like it's, you know, right when it ends. And I'm not sure that's what's intended. It also doesn't seem to address the issue of students coming in from outside the district, and at what point those students would be assessed. And to me, that's one of the places where we might have kids that deviate from what would otherwise be our path, because they're coming in from either a different state or a private school or something else. And I just want to make sure we have a way that those students also have an opportunity to be assessed if their parents think they don't just fall straight into our track. So I, I'm in favor of going back to the language we had before, which was broader. But if you're thinking about doing this language, I still think there's a couple places that needs clarification.
Okay, thanks. Any other board members? Davina?
So I've been giving this a lot of thought, and I think that we have a real opportunity by being a K-8 district. And I think that some of these inequities that have been noticed around the demographics in these classes, that that's really on us as a K-8 school, to work with our families and students and our math program, and ensure that all students have the supports that they need. Because that, that statistic of kind of where we are now is not what I hope to see as the future. And I know this isn't on the policy now, but just as an example, you know, high schools in San Francisco have gone to open enrollment for AP classes. So I would like to see a future at another time be taken up about how do we actually increase access for all students in the courses that they feel that they're prepared to take, and then where they want to challenge themselves in communication with kind of what's expected and all of that. So I think that where we are now is there are things that we want to improve on, be it communication, you know, with families to make sure that we understand where students are with differentiation. There's all these different areas, and I feel like after a year of, you know, trying this out, that we had a, you know, a committee, and I want to honor the work of that group. And I'd like to try out the original plan. I just wasn't prepared at the last meeting, because there was all of these changes. And after kind of having some time away and reflecting, I really want us to try that out. I, I believe that our families, you know, there may be a few situations out there, but I don't think that there are going to be a lot of those situations. I think that families will respect and listen to the guidance of teachers. And that I know personally, I wouldn't want my child to be in a class where they're going to feel overwhelmed or that it's not the right fit for them. I think a lot of families don't want that stress and, and really just want the best place for their kids. So given all of that, I just kind of want to change, just kind of put a different view and a different spin on the, you know, instead of expecting that certain demographics of students are not going to ever be in this class, I think it's on us to ensure that they are. And we have that opportunity in our district, so I would be in favor of going to the original version.
Okay, anyone else from the board?
Just, just procedurally, the, the version, are we talking about the version that was voted down last month?
Um, yes.
Okay, so that version was voted down by the majority of the board. So now, is it being suggested that that version come back in whole cloth to be reconsidered?
What I had suggested was that we leave the edits to the very end that talk about mathletes, where I think it's the, instead of the math department shall, it's the Kentfield School District may or can offer mathletes. And then the other edit was to move certain paragraphs down. Those, I don't, those edits are fine by me, but the place that I'm suggesting we revisit what was on the agenda last month is the text as it related to the placement for students.
Right, nobody disagreed with the mathlete language or the moving of the paragraphs. It was the other part, the substantive part that was voted down. So that's why it got changed and brought forward to be voted on now, to see if the changes are acceptable. I, I don't understand the notion of going back to a previous version.
Well, so Liz, to be clear, I, I was simply saying that I still, I, I was the lone vote that voted in support last time of that version, and that's fine. So I'm just stating that I still support that version. I think what I'm hearing Davina say is that, in thinking about it, she is in favor of going back to that language as well. I haven't heard from Quoc or David or Heather, and obviously, the majority rules whatever the decision is.
Okay, Quoc, go ahead. You're on mute.
You're muted.
Mute.
My wife might have done that. I, I have two thoughts. I, I, you know, we have limited resources, and while math has come up every year I've been on the board for five plus years, I, I do, I take seriously the diversity, equity, inclusion, and why I share Davina's thought that it can come in on the district to raise everyone up so that all races, you know, can have access to an accelerated math program. The truth of the matter is allocation of our limited resources matters. And I think Brad made some really compelling points about how in doing this, or potentially doing this, we are making a choice to offer accelerated math, which is a choice that could otherwise be used to help lift up students who are below grade level. So this, this is, I think our actions do matter. And on the one hand, I, I agree that students in our district, you know, there, there's a, there's a big demand for accelerated math, and other districts and neighboring districts have it. On the other hand, we don't have to do what neighboring districts do. We, we can do what we think is right for our schools. So there, there's a lot, I, I guess I have a lot of mixed feelings thinking about how do we allocate our limited resources. You know, hopefully raise everyone up, but the truth is, we can't do everything for everyone. So this is hard. The, the other thing, you know, is I think the celebration of all the employees and staff, you know, earlier in, in the meeting was great. I just wanted to take note that we could talk about math for another three hours, and we have to be mindful of the time, not just of our board time, but staff and parents. So we need to come to some decision, whether it's this or whether we need more time. We can't spend another hour on math, and we have a lot of important things on the agenda. So I just want to raise those two points.
No, thank you, Quoc. And just to be clear, are you, I'm gonna put you on the spot here. Are you in favor of reverting back to the previous version? Or would you be prepared to vote on this version tonight?
Oh.
It's all, it's all fair answers in terms of-
Yeah, yeah. I like, I like some aspects of this version tonight, but I'd be curious, you know, what David thinks, and, and I, I put a big weight in what Dave and Sarah, I think, because they put the most time into this, so I want to hear your points.
Yeah, agreed. Okay, David, please.
Sure, so, so we've obviously spent a lot of, of time on, on this topic. I think we need to listen to, to respect and listen to the guidance of our teachers, which is another sentiment we heard. We've heard it from the teachers, we've heard it from site administration, we've heard it from the superintendent. We have this narrow exception that is going to, it's going to be, it's an uncommon exception in rare circumstances that has the opportunity to have these kids go into seven plus and, and, and algebra. I, I think that accomplishes the goal of having this opportunity. I think if we want to discuss eliminating seven plus in algebra and redirecting district resources to, to that, that is a, is a, is a worthwhile discussion, but I would say not one to have tonight. We have gone through this and hashed this out many, many times with a tremendous amount of input. We are doing this over the strenuous objections of our middle school principal, our math department as, and our, our superintendent. Those three groups have agreed that this provides some answer to this vexing question of, of allowing people to get into this accelerated math program. It doesn't do everything for everybody, I get that. But it, it is the path forward that we have determined beats most people's needs, sorry, beats, beats both people's interests and, and input. I, I would suggest that we vote on this as it is and move on.
Okay, thank you, David. And just to be clear, I, I want to make it very clear that David is correct in saying that the accelerated question that Brad is raising, that is going to be discussed as a future agenda item, in terms of putting it on a subsequent agenda. That wasn't, that's not part of this discussion on the current AR, and I think that's an important distinction to make. And I just, you know, I'm also aware that I think we have some hands up, too. But I do want to just, before we take hands, I just want to get a sense from this board if we are ready to make, do a vote tonight, or do we want to wait and do this later? I, for one, am ready to do a vote tonight on this current version, but I want to make sure we have, before we take comments, otherwise I would postpone those comments to when we are ready to take a vote.
Heather, I think we need to take a vote so that we can get this enacted, and whatever students may or may not be affected by whatever version we pass, that those, that that planning can happen and we can move forward.
Okay, okay. Well, as, as I stand, like, if this is the, the version we have before us is the one that's attached to this agenda, it's not the previous version, so I just want to-
But, but we can amend it. We can, we can amend it in real time in the meeting. That's what we did last, we've done that before. So this one, if it, if it gets voted down, we can, we can then resurrect a different version, or we can modify this one with new text and vote on that modified version. I understand the majority may or may not want to do that, but we can adopt a different version and vote on a different version.
Okay, no, correct. I want to take the hands, oh yeah, sorry, go ahead, Quoc.
And, and while I think every voice is important, we have to be mindful of time and, and not, you know, let everyone talk, you know, for the next hour or so on this. We, we need to make a decision.
Right, agreed. Okay, and I, with that, is, I know there are hands up. I think I can even see them over here. Yes, Scott Candell, you are up. And we, and respectfully, we do ask for three minutes, if possible. Scott, I think you might be muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, perfect. I'll, I'll, I'll be under three minutes, I'll be quick. Let me just start. I know in these times, equity is a very important issue. For those of you that don't know me, I have been a public defender, a civil rights attorney. This is a, a very important issue to me. I appreciate Brad's passion for the issue. I think with all due respect, he misunderstands the issue. Okay, equity is allowing everybody, regardless of your background, race, you know, anything about you that you are treated as an individual. And that is all that is being asked at this point, for the board to treat people as individuals. If there is a kid who is an exception, regardless of his background, regardless of anything about him, that person should be evaluated as an individual and should be able to get an education that's appropriate for that specific individual. If the individual happens to be advanced, and the best placement for that person should be in a different class, a different grade, whatever it happens to be, that should be what happens, as opposed to trying to bring everybody to the middle to make everybody equal. That's, that's not equity. And I'll cut it there, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, next, moving forward, Patricia Neville?
Hi. I'm sorry, I, I, you know, I, I actually was gonna echo exactly what the last speaker said. I, I know that if, if we had a parent meeting, you know, my child's in accelerated math, and I know that seventh grade science was challenging this year. So accelerated math really engaged her, but I also know that if we had a big parent meeting, a town hall, the families and parents of kids that are in accelerated math are, are a smaller group. If we are looking at cutting classes, and, and I, I appreciate all the things that the first speaker said about it being perhaps a drain on resources. So if we are looking at cutting classes, we have to cut art or music or accelerated math, because we just don't have the resources, then that would be one discussion. But to identify, you know, that kind of that trimming of the trees to make everybody more equal, that's like saying, well, people that accelerate in art, we're gonna, we're gonna trim that, too. I, I mean, the, we have accelerated math students, and it does help us be competitive with other districts, and I don't think that pushing everybody down to the same mediocrity is, is the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Next, Alisa.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak to this. I would, I, I sent everybody my questions. I appreciate, I would really be grateful if those could be answered regarding what this current version of the AR anticipates. I, I'm really frustrated, because I feel like every meeting we have about this subject, the math department brings up some new objection that hasn't been brought up before, and it takes time away from focusing the discussion on what we've had in front of us. I am, I am an immigration- I am, I am an immigration lawyer. I have spent my life fighting for social equity. And so do my kids. They understand what it means. And so it disturbs me when anyone assumes that an accelerated class is only going to be for one demographic. If you were to go to my son's private school and go to the top math class, the top math students are not white males. So I think that it depends on where you look. Separately, I would really like to understand if the goal of the AR is to top out students to being placed in algebra or if there are options for independent study after that, which is what other districts do. And they do it well. If you look at the mathletes and other forms of measurement, the districts that allow independent learning have kids who thrive and in their math classes or in their independent studies. And I just don't understand why we keep saying that that's not an option for our kids. We do need that flexibility. And I agree with Davina that we should be bringing all kids up. The size of the seven plus eight and algebra classes have shrunk rather than grow. We should be looking for ways to bring everyone using our growth mindset into greater math options. So I, I really ask, could someone please address my questions? Do I need to repeat them? Or do you have them in front of you from the email?
No, thank you, Alisa. We've all reviewed them. I think we're going to move forward to Andrea, next.
I lost Andrea, but I have Marcus Harrison.
Oh, great.
Okay, there we go. Marcus, you're on.
Yeah, so it just, it seems like you guys have put a lot of work into this measure. But the reason you guys keep coming back to it are, is that there are no clear cut goals in terms of how you're going to define who is in or not within the program. And until you do that, you're going to continue to go round and round. And as someone who has a black child who is advanced in math, I still would want her separated because it's not needed at this age. It's. Hello?
Yeah. You're still, you just cut out for a second.
Okay, it's just not needed. It's not needed at all. Did you guys hear all of them?
Yes. No, thank you, Marcus. Okay, and it looks like Andrea is back.
I think, can you hear me okay? Sorry about that.
Great.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just going to make this quick. I just want to reiterate that I think it's important for a district to voice and acknowledge that an advanced student, whether it math or what, whatever it is who's asking to be challenged, can come from any cultural or socioeconomic background. And that that child should be met with where, where they're capable of being at. So I'm just kind of following up to Brad's comment there. I think it's very important for a district to believe in all kids. Okay, and I'm going to follow up with some resources through email because I don't want to take your time, that taking that option away in a public school is, would actually work against a child from a particular socioeconomic or cultural background. Okay, thank you so much, guys. I know it's late and just want to say thank you.
Great. Thank you, Andrea. I just want to read, I didn't, there were some chats that came through and I just wanted to make sure we acknowledge them. There was, let's see, starting with Marcus. Rather than focus on math, I would suggest you focus on the skills these young adults will need, like coding. From Teresa Chang, thanks so much, Scott, for sharing that. I entirely agree with that. From Grant Althouse, I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of what we are discussing. This whole reevaluation of the AR started with the request for a loophole to make the accelerated pathway available for sixth graders at Kent. The policy in front of you accomplishes that. So I am not clear why there continues to be a concern. And then follows up, it actually accomplish, accomplishes more than that. And I think that's it for the chats. I know, I think I'm very cognizant of the time. It's 8:20. I think that unless board members have more that they want to question, Sarah, it sounded like you wanted to make, you want to, you want to make the suggestions if the vote does not vote in favor of it. Am I correct?
I'll defer to the rest of the board on the process. I, I recognize I may be in the minority here and that's fine if that's where we go.
Okay.
Somebody else could move, I'm not going to move to approve the current version, but somebody could if they wanted to.
Is anyone going to move to approve the current version? David, thank you. And is there a second? Quoc is seconding. We've had a discussion, I think. So, um, okay, so all those in favor of the current version we have in front of us, which is attached to the agenda? Oppose? Okay, motion carries. And I want to remind everyone that Brad's suggestion about the accelerated, eliminating accelerated math will be discussed in future agenda items, which is farther down the agenda. And I think we can move forward. And thank you to everyone, I should say, particularly those who participated on the committee that worked on this AR, on the second iteration, I should say, of this AR. If I know one thing, I think that means that we may be looking at this again in the very near future. The first iteration, I should say, was passed two years ago. So this is the second iteration. All right, moving forward. Oh my gosh. Okay, so employee organization reports, KTA is up first. Brad or Susan?
Oh, hang on, I've got Brad coming in. There we go. Hey, Brad.
Sorry, I'm sure you're tired of me by now. My apologies. Thank you. First and foremost, I want to congratulate both Sally and Liz on their retirements. Well deserved. And KTA, on behalf of KTA, we hope you enjoy them, every moment of them. Next, I'd like to acknowledge Grant Althouse for doing something that mathematics, we always say, you know, the only way to solve a problem is by starting. And he very bravely started solving the problem of trying to figure out how to schedule things. Should we be using a cohort model for the fall? A very difficult undertaking. You know, it, it, no one's ever happy with you right away. It's just, you just keep chipping away at the problem. And he's included a lot of people in it. He's done a really excellent job in getting the ball rolling. And so I applaud him for doing that and really getting us off the ground with that. We have been working with Raquel and with Liz and with Grant and working on a reopening committee. We have broken into subcommittees and that has been rolling along and we appreciate having been included. And the process continues and we are grateful for it. We wanted to let you know that we discussed surveying our members and that survey has been sent out. And at a certain point when we do have results, we will be sharing some information with the districts or taking the temperature of where our members are at with regards to reopening and going forward. I think one thing we're all clear on is that it is uncertain and it is going to be difficult. And our biggest concern, I think, is the safety of children, the safety of staff and the ability to deliver instruction in a way that's effective and allows us to bond with children. I can tell you from my own experience, this has definitely been the most difficult thing I've ever tried to attempt in terms of teaching. And the loss of the connection with students is really difficult. My wife, who is smarter than me, has put it best, it is twice the work and none of the reward. And there is some reward, but it's just not the same. So I think that's all I have for you. I thank you for your time. And as always, we look forward, KTA does, to working with the board and with the superintendent. Good night.
Thank you, Brad. Is there anyone from the classified staff would like to address the board? Provide an update? Okay, I think we'll move forward to KIC and PTA updates. Do we still have Kira and Dirk?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Hi, everyone. Hi again. Okay, my KIC update. Well, first, we have very soft, we've started a very soft launch on the business campaign. As you know, we're being very sensitive to what's going on in our community. So we're sort of staggering our reach out for good reason. I want to say that Mandy, Willian, Lori Treggenowen have pulled off amazing, an amazing feat with a, a successful auction, given the circumstances, not only given the circumstances, but it was truly a successful auction. And we really want to thank our community for supporting us and for, you know, going forward and, 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 and helping us out, supporting the kids. We are very, very grateful. We do still have our Fund a Need, which was, which is our KIC, KSPTA partnership in providing grants to our teachers. That is, we're still raising money for that. So if anybody wasn't able to get to that through the kickschools.org website, you can click on the big banner, the National Nights banner. That'll take you to a page where you can donate to the Fund a Need. And we are starting to disseminate the grant application as of this week. And we also need to let everybody know that we are still raising money for annual giving. We are, however, short this year, not by a whole lot, but we are short as of now. We are going to see if we can gather some more funds in the next couple of weeks. So stay tuned. And I think that's everything I've got from my end. Yeah. Oh, and yeah, and we're still working on the website. So again, that will be a, a summer, some summer work. And look for the launch at the end of the summer, beginning of the school year.
Great. Thank you, Kira. And again, congratulations on the auction. And we're successful in being able to pivot and pull off a truly exceptional auction at these times. And so I think.
Very well done to the whole team.
Oh, yes, I know. Thank you, David. I know this. Okay, moving forward, I think we have Erica on the line.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Excellent. So first off, I just wanted to, in case you didn't see it, we did send out a message just sort of expressing solidarity and sharing the, the California PTA statement of solidarity with all the families across our nation and here in our district who have been victims of physical, psychological or emotional violence as a result of systemic racism that continues to plague our communities. And so I just wanted to articulate that, you know, KSPTA, we pledge to listen, to stay engaged and to, to take action to try to help make our community and the world beyond more inclusive, safer and better for all of our families. So I just wanted to take a moment to articulate that. And then on a totally different shift to more sort of business oriented, we have finally finalized our contract with a new lunch vendor. In case people did not know this, Good Earth School Lunch went out of business. So Good Earth itself still exists, but they are no longer doing a school lunch program. And so we had no choice but to find a new vendor, but we are super excited. Our new vendor is going to be School Foodies. And they have earned rave reviews from schools that use them, such as Marin Primary and St. Cecilia's and several other schools throughout the Bay Area. They are a local company that's family owned. There's the Dennis King, who's the owner, is this fantastic guy, and he has a really strong team. They are currently operating and serving all, a bunch of Oakland's youth programs right now throughout the summer. So they're already in full swing, operating under the health department's COVID-19, you know, safeguards and protocols. So they're really set up to be, to hit the ground running for us. All the food is packed, is cooked onsite and then packaged in individual servings. And then nobody touches the food again until your kid opens it and eats it. So I think that's going to be a very comforting thing for parents. It is also the other thing, and the thing about this company is that they, they transport the food warm and it goes directly into warmers or refrigeration if it's a cold entree. And so it's not the airline model of sort of cooking it, cooling it, and then reheating it. And they're great partners in terms of zero waste. They try to source locally, sustainably, organic whenever possible. All the ordering is online through an app or the website. And there are eight to 12 different menu options every day for parents to, and parents and kids to choose from. So I think, I think families are going to be really happy with it. We're really excited about it and we'll be rolling out information about it pretty soon. We were just sort of waiting to finalize the contract. Other announcements, we have a new board member to announce. Sarah Owens has joined us as the VP Communications for the upcoming school year, which we're really excited about. And Kari Erwin, who has served in that role last year, is going to, I'm going to be appointing her as the at-large representative for, in the fall. So she will continue to stay on the board, but in a different role. So I just wanted to update you about that sort of personnel issue, the, for the board. And the last couple of things, basic yearbooks have been delayed because of COVID-19. They had production issues. But we will be getting those in hopefully by the end of the month and we'll be messaging out about distribution there. So if people are, have been, you know, complaining that those haven't been distributed yet, they will be eventually. And then the last things I just really wanted to say were thank yous. I want to thank Kira and Dirk and Mandy and everyone at KIC for partnering with us on the Fund a Need. It's so exciting and we can't wait to work on the process of doling out those funds. I want to thank the teachers, staff and administration, and especially Sally and Liz and all the departing staff for all of your hard work and commitment to the district. I want to thank all the parent volunteers and all the parents who became teachers this spring for everybody sort of muddling our way through, through this spring with as much grace as possible. And finally, I just want to thank the board for everything that you guys give to this. Because while I am going to say my good night and leave the meeting shortly, I know you guys will be doing this for a very long time. So thank you for all that you do for our kids and our families.
Great. Thank you, Erica. All right. Moving forward, we're into reports from the superintendent and staff. Liz, do you want to kick us off? And I think you're on mute.
Thank you. So we're going to talk about a few things, including the deferred maintenance update and the basic playground funding. Raquel's going to join us. In fact, I'll put her on panel right now because she'll, will blend right into the return to school work that she's been spearheading and lunch program and summer school. So let's welcome Raquel. And I'm going to take you to my screen to look at the deferred maintenance information, if that's okay. So this is information that I've shared with you. I've tried to make it a little bit more easily accessible with some color coding. So what we've got here is some items that are either not applicable or are done. Those are the ones that are shaded gray. We've got some that are not planned and, but we have, you know, sort of a soft price for. Those are the magenta ones. So those are everything from carpeting to the HVAC project to lighting, a little bit of painting in the interior, painting in the community center and the gym, paving. This is the play structure, a couple of things. This is, this, this right here is the 228,500. That would be our contribution to a basic, or that's the balance of the basic, basic play structure. After deducting the 96,500 that KIC has, has raised for that in last year's Fund a Need. So, and then there are a few others. Let me point out, in particular, we've tried to put a price tag on the total cost of new roofing for both sites. That's obviously not in the works right now. And then the security upgrade has to do with our video camera quote, which is quite high, $250,000 plus an additional $50,000 in consulting fees. So that's not budgeted right now. So the total cost, oh, and then, sorry, we, we estimated another $2 million for solar energy system. So if and when you are faced with the need to replace the roofs, the whole roofs at both campuses, it will involve replacing the solar system as well. It will have reached the end of its useful life. So in terms of just sort of wish. So in terms of just sort of wish lists, like nice to have, you know, gonna need really badly someday, that's an eight, that's an $8 million price tag. If you move over to this column here, um, that says encumbered completed funding source, I've broken that out into the three possible funding sources, but these are projects that either have been completed with some of, with this money or are in process of being completed or are encumbered. So, um, again, shaded means it's done. So we got our front row in, that, that's our, um, sound system. That was a security feature. We have, um, replaced HVAC units in some of the rooms at Kent and the district office. Um, those were, that's actually the heating system. The, um, painting is being done currently. That's a $425,000. Paving of the blacktop behind the gym where the three portables came out is in process. That's, that's a safety measure because there's the jagged hole back there. That's 45,000. Um, in process is the roofing repairs at Basish, 800,000. And then the replacement of the locks and keys at, across the district is 22,000. And that is a total of 1.2 million dollars. So either completed or in process is a million two. Um, in other funding sources, we've got the Grant Grover money. So that's this column here, and we have committed, only in two places, the Grant Grover money has been approved to be used. One is the rate, the restroom projects at both campuses. So the Basish restrooms are done. Kent, we, we rejected all bids this summer because they were too high, so we'll go back out for that, but that money's committed. And then there was a $50,000 committed by the board to replacing, uh, part of the roof on the district office. And then in, in terms of the KIC, KIC funding of, of capital projects, we have, um, this commitment of $96,000 to replace the Basish play structure, $375,000 to, towards the back 50, which is done. And that's a total of 471,500. Um, we updated the priority rankings a bit. Um, but, oh, I see my thing jumped. Anyway, so when you get down here, what it looks like is we spent $340,000 on projects and they were, that were completed prior to 2020. We've got 1.2, point, 1.292 million dollars where the project's currently under construction for a total of 1,632,000. We have, um, a bond beginning fund balance of 2.4. That's what's in the bond bank. We are required to spend about $16,000 on compliance issues. Uh, current projects are, are taken off of this bond balance as well, and we're left with a little over a million dollars to apply to any of the magenta projects, uh, that you might want to do or you might want to sit on. But I know that we talked last month about, um, this item in particular, the Basish play structure. Um, and it wouldn't, it, we, our, our calculations would indicate that you have plenty of money for that.
Liz, what is that 100,000 to replace, repair the field basis?
Uh, you know, it's nothing. It was, we, this is an old one that we just put there, um, to do some rehab on, on the fields. Um, but you know what? Not having people on the fields for three months, rehabs them pretty nicely, it turns out. So that's not really a necessary expense right now, we don't think. That got, that got dropped to a four.
Okay, go ahead, Quoc.
Liz, thanks for updating this. Um, can you, uh, remind me, this is deferred maintenance that we can use bond money for, but, um, to what extent we have monies or are we pulling monies from for, um, investments we need to make for the students to come back to school? So whether it's the portable hand washers or, you know, other sanitation, safety, masks, et cetera, does that get pulled from our regular budget? And, or can, in other words, can we use some of the bond money to do a one-time purchase of PPE and, 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 you know, washing stations?
Yeah. So the, the language in the bond was, uh, around modernization and, uh, safety. Uh, so safety, you, you could, you could look at, at using some of this money as a safety, uh, as a safety expense. Um, it's never best practice to spend bond money, which you pay off for 30 years on things that are thrown away. Um, you know, so that's, that's a consideration. Um, but we don't have, if your question is, do we have any money in our budget for 2021 to, that, you know, allocated toward return to school, the answer is no.
Right. And, and so, you know, I, I think of safety as, I understand your point of you don't want to spend bond money on, for instance, masks that you throw away or gloves that you throw away. But, um, you know, as I think about whether it's Plexiglas or the portable hand, hand washing stations, I think of those as, as safety, um, that, um, I, I would feel comfortable using some of the bond money because money is fungible, you know, for things like that. That would free up otherwise our operating budget monies. Um, so I would just throw that out there.
And there's also about 400,000 in the bank, um, the Grant Grover bank.
Right. Or Grant Grover. But I mean, if we could use Grant Grover or bond money-
Oh, I'm circling the wrong thing, sorry. Uh, we, the, the, the starting balance for Grant Grover was 1.4 million, and we, we have spent or encumbered at 1.1 million 50,000. So there's about 350,000 there as well.
Okay. So I, I don't, you know, I mean, different if it's Grant Grover or bond money for, um, PPE and other safety investments to help onboard and bring the kids and faculty back safely because that would free up our operating budget next year for other expenses.
Well, more to the point, it would keep you from having to cut expenses from next year's budget.
And, and I know that wasn't in our deferred maintenance list, but it just, it just occurred to me, uh, that thoughts, I want to throw that out there for the board.
Quoc, that's an excellent consideration and, and later in the meeting, we are going to be voting on items right to that point. Um, and that's an interesting consideration that we maybe put on hold this, um, until we have a better grasp of what our summer looks like and what, um, it's an interesting idea. And I also just wanted to raise the question just for the sake, I know we've looked at this list so many times over the years, um, but this, just for the sake of, um, for all the people who are also joining us today, when it says priority ranking, this was the ranking that was done by staff, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, uh, it was done by management.
Right. Okay. Okay, that's, that's, um, important. And it, and it looks like a lot of those rankings haven't really changed, um, over the years.
Just a few.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, a few have dropped mostly.
Liz?
Yes.
Um, a couple of questions. Thank you for bringing this up to date. It sounds like we have 1.1 million of the bond funds and 350 of Grant Grover. Is that, is that a true statement?
That's true.
Okay. Um, in terms of expenditures, I know, I recall hearing, um, a number of comments about the HVAC and some of the classrooms being very hot. I know we heard that from teachers and I actually think we heard that from students. And I know in a prior meeting, we had talked about, obviously we don't have two and a half million to redo the whole HVAC system, but whether there were certain buildings or certain classrooms that could be identified that maybe had more of the brunt of the, whether it's afternoon sun or other things, has there been any discussion of trying to parse out doing part of the HVAC?
So if we go into the Wayback Machine and talk about the design teams that met to discuss the modernization and the new construction, those were made up, those were broad-based, you know, committees led by the architects, made up of parents and teachers and administrators and other staff. And as those committees were working through the allocation of the bond dollars, there were, decisions were made by those committees to allocate the dollars elsewhere and not to do air conditioning throughout both campuses and instead to use the, the fans and the, um, our, you know, just our ambient temperatures that tend to be moderate. Um, and so coming to the end of the projects and, and having people say, we really want air conditioning, that was something that was considered and rejected as in favor of other things along the way. And so if there's a desire to go back and now pick and choose places to put air conditioning in, that's going to take, that's going to eat through this million dollars in a heartbeat. And, um, because it will, there's, there's not just, it's not just about compressors, it's about architects and design and permits and management of the project. So my strong feeling is, and I know this is not something, this is not going to be my, my mantle to, to assume, but my strong feeling is when there, when it comes time, which isn't going to be a long time from now with, I'd say five years, when it comes time to, um, figure out how to put a new roof and solar system on the, on both, um, schools, I would, I would strongly consider doing a study to, to do a bond that covers those two things plus finishing up HVAC across both campuses. It would be, uh, you know, you wouldn't go out for your maximum bonding capacity. It would be a very small, very targeted, um, you know, facilities improvement bond. Um, and I think it'll be far enough, uh, you know, I think, I, I think it's passable and I think it's necessary. I don't know how else you're going to find the money to put new roofs on a camp, on campus and roofs don't last forever, nor does solar. So I would bundle them, those three things if I, if it were my, my problem, uh, opportunity. Um, so that's just my thought on that.
Okay. And then my other question is, um, how long do we have to spend the bond money that we currently have before we lose the ability to make the improvements? Just because that influences maybe our decision timing and when we put things out to bid.
Uh huh. So you need to encumber all of the dollars within three years of sale. You don't have to spend them, but you have to encumber them.
Okay.
And so I'd have to look back and see when our last sale was. Um, it's getting close, I'd have to say. I, I think it's-
Yeah. That was why I'm asking because I was thinking we're coming up-
I mean, it's 2018 at the latest. It's not, it's not 2019. So it's either 20, like 2017 or 2018. I'd have to look back at the, um, the annual reports.
Okay.
So Liz, in your recommendation, I know you just mentioned about kind of the, what you might do as kind of a, a phase two or going out for a bond later. What would be your recommendation for right now as we, as we stand and look at this list?
Well, I think we need to make a decision about these cameras. I don't think we need to put in $250,000 worth of cameras. I think we can pare that down to some very basic, I don't know. Uh, it may just be that, that, you know, the focus has changed from school shooting to the pandemic. I don't know. You know, uh, we're, we're, we're sort of reacting to our time, right? But we were very clear that when, when Parkland was, all we were thinking about was that we needed cameras on every corner or, you know, to make sure vaping wasn't happening. And now it all, that all seems like, God, we could really use that $250,000 for, uh, you know, our hand sanitizer machines or soap machines or hot spots or what are they called? Hot shots? No, that's different. That's tea. Insta-hot. It's, you know, talking about the hot water heaters under the sink? Um, you know, those kinds of things could be easily used and we could put, you know, we could go very basic on the camera situation. Um, it's interesting with all, you know, we spent a lot of money on fencing over the years and, um, it, Grant was just sharing with me that that's working out really well as they plan for entry to campus next year because there's going to need to be control around entry and exit. So that, that's, that is a nice convergence of need. Um, you know, if there, if you're still thinking that there's, uh, that, that there's a, a need to, um, really partner with KIC to make this a whole project, um, I'm not sure that they are still needing all of that to make that project go, the large play structure at Basish. I don't know that. I don't know. We can go back and see if they have anything to say about that after this. Um, let's see.
Liz, is there a time limit on the Grant Grover money that we-
No.
Okay.
No, that being, being that that was settlement money, it's not, it's not time bound.
I'm, I'm personally in favor of, of leaving some money in the bank for future needs. And it might be the Grant Grover, $350,000 we don't touch, but the, if we have to encumber the bond money, I'm more in favor of encumbering that, but leaving, not spending everything we have.
Uh huh. I agree.
Yes, me too. And I, and I'm wondering, Liz, if, um, look, we have another meeting in a couple, um, weeks, is that it might be a wise use of our time to get the question answered about, um, when we actually have to take, to take action on that, on the bond money side of things. Um, and also maybe within two weeks, we can get some clarification, um, you know, after looking at our budget, which I know is coming later in our meeting, if we want to think about possibly pivoting and doing more of a focus of what Quoc talked about earlier on the safety issues, maybe that's just more of a pressing priority right now. I, I don't know. I'm just putting it out there to the group. Do, do we want to take a vote on this now and talk about it in terms of like, put direction to staff now on this or do we want to wait?
I, I'd like to wait and use as much of this for safety so we don't have to make cuts.
Yeah. Heather, I think, um, it's fine to wait, but I do think the issue of the playground structure, I think we owe KIC a response in terms of what we're willing to commit of district dollars towards that project from our last meeting. They just, it sounds like we may not need to put in, and I frankly, don't think we can afford to put in that 200 and some odd thousand, but, um, but I think we need to get back to them on what, what our commitment could be so that that project can move forward because they did that Fund A Need a while ago, and I think the community wants us to move forward on it.
Yeah, agreed. And maybe we could get clarification on that before our next meeting, um, exactly with that number and if, especially if it's come down. I agree because that was something we discussed.
So two things, um, so I, uh, why don't we do this? I'll, I'll find out, I can look up real quick when our last bond sale is, that's not hard. Um, and let's, I wonder if KIC has, I can't see hands when I'm sharing my screen. I'm going to stop sharing. Do you guys need to see this any longer?
No.
No.
Um, just in case anybody's still here. Uh, Kira, do you have anything to add? I see you're still awake, at least here. I'm not sure about awake. Um, may I ask, raise your hand if you, yeah, that a girl. Okay, here we go.
No.
Oh.
That's pretty lucky.
Sorry, Carrie. Kira, Carrie, they go next to each other. It jumps around and I got the wrong person. Hi, Kira.
Hi, sorry, I'm kind of jumping back and forth. So I missed part of the discussion and I, and I hear that, um, I believe there may not be all the funds for the playground. Uh, sorry if I just missed that, but I just want to put in another plug because the way I see it is, you know, we may come out of this, I realize that the discussion is also among some parents, you know, the playground, the kids aren't going to be able to use for a year or two or however long, but my thinking is if we can get it done, then when we come out of this, we have a new playground because if we come out of this and we haven't thought through the finances of it now, we are going to be without any money for it at all and we're going to have to start from ground zero, ground zero again. And I have to go back to my donors and tell them, you know, what's happening with it, uh, with their money. So, um, I just want to put in the-
Just one quick question. So I think the, the main question was not, you know, if we're going to fund it, but if, if the amount has possibly gone down, I think that was the question.
If, if the amount has gone down, what can we do?
The, the contribution, um, that, that the district would be, was asked to possibly contribute. I think right now we were looking at, what is it exactly?
228. Two hundred twenty-eight thousand.
Million, okay, thousand.
That's pretty much, this is David, that's pretty much in the ballpark of what we were talking about, we were talking about about the $300,000 number. And as you'll remember, I'm on the committee for this, um, there's a big grading component to it, creating a flat space and so on and so forth. The actual price of the playground structure itself is in the high seventies, I think, of that number. So, it really, there, it, it's, um, one of these construction projects where you can't do half of it, i- in a way. So, it's kind of.
Sorry, so that, that wasn't my question, I, I understand the project itself has that cost. I just don't think we as a district can afford to put $200,000 into it, and so my question was, if we put in less. Does KICK, through the endowment or other funds, have the ability to put in more than the 96 that's from the funding? That's really my question.
Out is questionable, I would have to, uh, just speak to a couple folks on our executive board and, about that, because. As of now, as I said before, if, you know, we'll have a shortage this year and, and if we have one next year. You know, we have to really kind of plan ahead, especially with, if there are, you know, truly going to be budget cuts going forward and all that. I think we just have to be really. You know, fiscally responsible from our end for the district with our commitment. That we, you know, that we provide for the district. Year on year, so I, I don't know, I want to be, I don't have an answer, but let me get back to you.
Great. No, thank you, Karen, thank you, Sarah, for clarifying.
Our bond sale, our last bond sale for the $18 million balance was May 2018. So we have one more year to encumber.
Okay. Okay. All right, um, so just taking a pulse check of this, of the board, so is everyone okay with adding this to the next agenda, which is two weeks away? Get, um, the open, oh no, we have all our open questions, so I guess the main reason we are going to wait. Is, um, if everyone's agreement is to see kind of how things pan out regarding the safety. Issues that we may be needing, which hopefully we will be made aware of in the next couple of weeks.
You're going to hear.
Already made aware of it tonight, it's already in the back.
Yeah, that's, so I think, um, but, I mean, but the point is, I don't think we should be making any decisions tonight on this until we hear that, if that's.
But it's, it is a possibility that we could vote on it tonight.
Well, if Kira needs to get back to us, we may need to wait for her to get back to us.
I also think we need to take a look, I need to take some time to look, um, back at the bond language to make sure that, that. An expenditure like that would fit into the parameters that we promised the voters.
Fair enough. Okay, um, so regardless, we're not going to give any specific direction tonight. Everyone's aware of that, okay, perfect.
Next meeting, if you want to spend some of this money, we'll have a vote, um, we'll have a, you know, an action item.
That's perfect, I was, it wasn't even listed, I don't think it was listed as an action item tonight anyway. Okay, moving forward, return to school committee.
Okay, and so, welcome Raquel. Why don't you, I, I've made it possible for you to share your screen.
Okay.
And, you're a panelist, so take it away.
Okay, great, hi, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, I'm going to go over the presentation. The format is the same format that I've been utilizing with Liz at the office hours, so there's just some minor updates, but I'll go ahead and run through those slides with everybody. Okay, so, here.
To hear that.
Sorry. Okay, and present. Sorry about that, technical difficulties.
Is it, is it me, is it on my end?
No, um, I just have too many things opened.
Okay.
So.
Did everybody get their survey today?
And there we go, oh, cool, okay, thank you, so sorry about that. So, um, a- as I mentioned before, I'm just using the same format that's been provided at office hours, we started this maybe two, three weeks, it's the third week. Um, this Thursday that Liz and I have been co-presenting to the community related to the return to school roadmap committee. So, I'll just run everybody through these, um, quickly. The first thing to just start with is really talking to, um, our community about the importance of any decision that we get to make is really focused on public health guidance, right? And really trying to recognize that there are things that we know, there's things that we don't know. And if we can really stay focused on what is it that we know that we can make decisions on. What I tried to do here is, you'll notice, there's some color changes and those are new pieces that I've added in. So, in terms of what's known is right now, based on what we have from public health. Is that we can anticipate there to be some form of hybrid option, um, in the fall. And that means is in-person, classroom-based instruction, as well as some distance learning instruction. As you all are aware, a survey went out today, so we will be getting feedback from our community. Um, and as Brad mentioned earlier, KTA also sent out a survey to staff. We still want to, um, you know, get the pulse on our administrators as well as our classified staff. But just to note, that's, right now, we can anticipate this kind of, um, program for the fall. Reconfiguration of facilities, so we got to go through a walkthrough this last week, so really looking at our facilities, how do we have to update? Um, as Quoc mentioned, the essential protective equipment that's needed. So, we just had, um, two more reports came out over the weekend, one from the Department of Public Health, as well as one from the California Department of Education. Talking about what is the essential equipment that's necessary, it ranges from face coverings, gloves, um, the hand sanitizer, soap. Face shields is something now that's listed, goggles, so the list is growing, uh, which is concerning, right? Because it feels like every time we turn around, there's something else that we get, get to add to the list. So, where that leads us to is the training and monitoring that will need to be in play, as well as the increased expenses. So, I, a- as mentioned before, when we get down to the budget, there's, um, some information related to what are the anticipated costs for some of these. Known items that we're going to need. What's unknown, we don't know when, when or when there will be a vaccine, um, and so we need to just forge forward with what we have right now. I think I shared with people, I got tested last week and I got my results, I'm negative, so no COVID for me right now. But, one of the things that we're piloting right now across our county is the opportunity for. Essential workers to be tested, and so, the public health is really looking at any essential worker needing to be tested on a monthly basis. And so there's some of our local districts that will be hosting some pilot testing, the county office of education just did that. I think the Nevada district has also volunteered to be a, a pilot testing site. Again, mention the funding piece, our, our, how are our funds going to be impacted? We know we have a $54 billion shortfall in our state budget, 18 billion in education, so. As we are anticipating something to come out on June 15th, and so we'll just continue to wait, and I think Kirsten will be speaking later about the, the, the budget for the district. Staffing needs, um, what's our staffing pattern that we're going to need related to? All of the precautionary steps that we'll be putting in place if we're able to have kids back in campus. And we've talked about the increased need of potentially for round custodial, support staff. In terms of our certificated staff, what needs will that, we'll, we have there. Um, also recognizing that, um, you know, is there going to be some flexibility related to our staffing? Because of having to have cohorts in classrooms where the teacher, um, for example, his or her credential isn't, they're, they're going to be in a classroom where mathematics is being taught. But, they have to stay with an English Language Arts teacher, per se, at the middle school, so just thinking about all of those things that come into play. The survey is going to let us know how parents feel about sending their kids to school, um, as well as where are their students that may not be able to come to school? Because they might be, um, health compromised. I can't see what this next thing says here, excuse me for a minute. And then again, the staff and student EPE, so one of the things that's a big question out there is, do, are students required to wear face coverings? And so, we are hearing from, um, the public health is, I'm sorry, the CDC is saying that. Well, really, any child over two should be wearing a face covering, yet the requirements from our local public health is, nobody under 12. Is required to wear a face covering. Yet, the May 22nd, Scott, May 22nd guidance that came out from public health related to the summer camps. It was highly advisable that students, when they were not engaging in activity, that they would be wearing some form of face covering if they were over the age of two. So that will lead us to just really thinking about having that material available for our kids and also training them on how to utilize it. Appropriately. And then, last but not least, the student cohort size, so we're still sitting at the one to 12 ratio, which means 12 students per cohort. One adult, um, would be with those students, it could be two adults, but those two adults would have to stay with those 12 students. They could not switch, they would, they must stay with that group for at least three weeks. And that's how we're seeing the operations happen within the summer camp programs. Now, there are exceptions to the rule, if there's a situation where a staff member, um, falls ill for some reason or has a situation in which he or she. Is not able to, um, come to work, there are exceptions where you can have a substitute step in. So, just, but to note, the best practice is three weeks. So, as you all may be aware, we have our return to school roadmap, roadmap committee. And so it's a multidisciplinary group of people where, um, we've kind of narrowed ourselves down a bit. Focusing on instruction, the mental wellness piece, technology, we have a steering committee that's overseeing all. And we have one member from each of these mini committees coming together, and then we have our site safety task force team. So we have people from the Basij site, the Kent site, as well as the district office coming together to really look at what we need to put in place to support. Our ability to open the facilities. We also really wanted to target, what is our purpose, so taking from, um, the strategic plan, just focusing on. You know, we want to be sure that the physical and social emotional well-being of our students is at the forefront. That we are also focusing on eliminating that achievement gap while providing the most. The most effective and high-quality academic program that we can, with, with, in whatever physical configuration we can offer, right? So again, we have to go back to what public health is telling us, so that whatever we offer has to align with that. Optimizing our financial and human resources, so how are we using our staff in the most effective way possible and really rethinking that as well? And then engaging our entire community in bold thinking, and this really goes to the importance of the survey and trying to get the feedback from our community and our stakeholders. Um, so what I thought would be good as we continue to kind of update our community is focus first on the safety piece. And really, because i- in my head at least, in thinking about, um, when we, when we think about opening the facility, we want to be sure that state, that staff. And our families recognize that we're taking all the precautions that we need to, in order to be sure the facilities are safe for students. And so, um, again, our purpose here is around the physical and social wellbe- well-being of our, um, kids. And some of the actionable steps that we needed to do was, one, design and communicate a district safety guideline, which we have in draft form. And I say draft, because it's consistently being updated based on public health guidance. That has been reviewed at, um, with our site, sites task force, I also did a staff. Video conference last Friday where I went through it with all of staff, so a number of folks, I would say at least 50% of the staff has heard the information. And I've also, it's also been shared electronically with people. We had a site-specific, um, uh, visit from the county, the rapid response team came and walked through both, uh, Basij, Kent and the district office on Monday. We had over 20 people total, um, from all of the sites coming together, so it was quite, quite a, um, representation of, of the district. And right now, I'm working on a, uh, Q and A that we could post, that responds to questions, general questions that continue to come out. So as I mentioned, the face coverings is one, um, so working in collaboration with what's been already created through the county office of education. And making that resource available for our community. Tomorrow at 9:00 AM, Dr. Willis, as well as Dr. Santora, our public health officer and the deputy public health officer, will be ho- holding a webinar. That's open to the, to all of our school staff, um, labor unions, superintendents. Teaching, classified, certified, unrepresented trustees to join and hear questions, it will be recorded, so people can watch at their leisure as well. And then the next thing here is really kind of the timeline, so. The multi-phase timeline, so first is phase one, which is really this purchasing and installing the EPE, and this is right now in the month of June that we're focusing on this. Preparing our school and the district facilities for the cohort settings and the physical distancing, so we really have to go through and measure. Paul was great, um, at the site visits, he was measuring about to make sure that, um, our support staff in the front office, that they're really the six feet distance, looking at our district office and, and in the same. In the same way, determining, um, training and implementing the process for staff sign in and sign out. So, the importance of checking in, and this really goes back to the test track trace, so the importance of knowing who's been in the facility. Who might you have been in, um, close contact with, where you might have been exposed if somebody tests positive? And, um, then communicate that plan, so as I've already mentioned, um, you know, when I get to come onboard effective July 1, I will continue with office hours. I'm also going to offer opportunities for the staff, um, for me to give them updates regularly, so they know where we're at with planning. Phase two is end of June, um, early July, and this is where we would begin the dispersment of the EPE. That's if we're able to secure all that we need, um, across the district, set up the protective infrastructure. So we've talked about the paneling that may need to go up in various spots, similar to what you see at the grocery stores. Refine our health and safety student protocols, so that really is the big next step, is identifying what are the health and safety protocols? Ie, how are kids arriving on campus, are we going to have staggered schedules, where do they eat lunch? All of those things are really what we're going to dig into in this next phase two, which we're entering now. Um, the communication on training to the stakeholders, um, communication and training for our stakeholders, and I mentioned that before with the office hours that we'll maintain. Um, and then really consider options for pilot programming, um, and some kind of soft opening for services. So really thinking about if, if we come up with instructional program that we believe is the right. Right program that we would want to implement, that aligns with public health, is there an opportunity for us to pilot something in early August? So that we can test it out, just to try to see what, what, what does it look like, how does it feel? What does it, um, seem like when kids are back on campus in larger groups? And so, I will say, um, some may know, I got to participate in the steering committee that opened the pop-up childcare centers that. I think we had our first meeting in mid-March, right after the closure, and we had our soft opening on March 19th. And when that happened, we had nine students show up for the first day, very, very slow opening. But, by the time we got to Memorial Day, all of the pop-ups were packed, we couldn't, we couldn't, um, accept any more students, because all our slots had been filled. So, it's really nice to have that chance to do a little bit of a soft opening, so that you can trial and we can iron out some of the kinks. And then last is evaluate, um, our, what kind of social, emotional and academic screening we want to have for students. And so there are some, a variety of things, we have some staff already looking into these, in terms of trying to get a sense of where our kids are, um, before they get to come back to school in the fall. Step three is, again, communication and training to stakeholders, not only do we need to train our staff, but also our families. So if we're able to do some kind of soft opening, how are we getting the information out to our parents related to how are kids getting dropped off? How are kids getting picked up, what happens if they do have a temperature during their health screening? So trying to really think through that and how that training happens for our families. Implement a soft opening if we're able to secure funds to make that happen. And then, again, begin implementing the social, emotional and academic screening tool. Um, and then reopen school operations, August 25th is the first day of school per the calendar. So, you know, if we're able to make all this happen over the next couple of weeks, as long as we're maintaining alignment with public health. Then, we could hopefully have kids in the building, um, by late August for our first day of school. The other committee that's continuing to do work, um, led by Sally and Grant, we've also had Wendy. Has been participating, the new assistant principal, as well as Mary Ann, when she can. Is really about what does the instructional program look like, and that's still in developmental phase. Um, just to know some actionable steps here is just researching, evaluating and determining, what are the options that are available? We don't really have a whole lot of options, we know it's a cohort no bigger than 12, we know that one adult has to stay with those kids for no less than three weeks. That really limits us, um, and it goes back to the first slide talking about public health and, um, we just really have to stay in alignment with their guidance. Might the number go up? Maybe, we'll find out soon, um, but we really just have to go with what we know right now. That benchmark screening that I mentioned before on the academic and social emotional, so really figuring out what is the screening tool we'll use? And then how are we going to continue to do progress monitoring, so we can ensure our kids are meeting standard, where they need to be as they move along their trajectory? And then, the reality is preparing a contingency plan in anticipation of, um, updates from public health. We're going to have to really be ready to ramp up and ramp down. So, if there's a situation where there's an outbreak and we have to close school again and move into distance, remote learning mode again. We want to be sure that we're able to articulate to our community what that looks like, what they can expect from us. So we really have to have a strong contingency plan and be sure that our staff are equipped to do that, right? So we want to be very, very thoughtful and thinking through, and that's part of some of the summer planning too, that, that I would anticipate us to do. Considerations when planning, so at office hours, we've heard questions when, as people are hearing more about the cohorts. Real interest in wanting to know, how are those cohorts going to be developed? And so, um, you know, I just kind of take myself back to best practice related to heterogeneous groupings and really thinking through. How do we want to set up groups that, um, we have mixed abilities in the classrooms? Thinking about what do the facilities look like, also keeping in mind siblings and childcare issues that might come into play, so. So just really trying to be thoughtful about what those cohorts would look like. We have not, at least I'm not aware of us creating any of those cohorts just yet. It may be a little too early to do that, but just all that top of mind. Also recognizing the notion of holding our students harmless. The situation that we're, that's in front of us right now was not something that, that they caused, right? This is a pandemic that's happening here in our, in our world today. It's, it's nothing that we all anticipated, but we need to truly, truly hold our kids harmless and acknowledge that, that as they, they move into their next grade level, we need to not remediate, but really accelerate their learning. Identify those essential standards that they need for the foundation so that they can continue to move along the trajectory and be ready to move into their high school when they finish with us in eighth grade. And so our instructional committee is really working diligently on coming up with a very, very, very strong goal about what they expect for students. Keeping in mind our students with specialized services, our special education students, students with 504s, our English learners, what do they need? What are we doing to think about additional supports that they might need to have in place? We know extended school year is planned. It's planned to be virtual at this point in time. But really thinking about, thinking through how we want to continue to support all of those students that receive specialized services. And then again, going back to the nimbleness of a contingency plan, really being able to ramp up and ramp down and learn from our experiences. So I'm happy to say, the survey, we're getting quite a few responses rather quickly. So I think it's going to be really important that we take the feedback we receive, not only from our parents in the community, but also from our staff to really learn from these experiences. So this morning Liz was able to push out the survey that was created by a small subcommittee of folks. We already have, I want to say 200, almost 240 responses back, which is great. So in my head, if we pretend everybody has two kids, half of the population, that's close to 40% response rate already. So I think that's something that we should be proud of. Thank you to Erica, who took my call earlier today when I asked if she could connect with our PTA leads to try to help push it there. And I've outreach to Amber Hatfield as well, so she can help with our ELAC and DLEC families. So really trying to do some intentional pushes on getting people to get their feedback. As Brad mentioned, we have the staff survey for our certificated that's gone out. I do want to be cognizant of our classified staff and how they're feeling. So I think it's really important that we think about something that we can get to them. So trying to think about what those questions could be. And also want to acknowledge any incoming or new students. So my thinking is we'll take the current survey we have and augment it just a tad for our incoming kindergarten students and maybe get a pulse from parents on how, how about how they are feeling entering. I know that number has continued to grow with registration, but it'll be good to know that, as well as any new students coming into the district that might be in any of the grade levels. And then the student feedback piece. So again, I want to touch base with Sally and Grant about just ways in which teachers have already begun to get some authentic feedback from students, because I think having their voice is really important. Timeline, as mentioned, so the survey went out today. It closes next Tuesday, and the others will, to be determined, so. I think that's it. That was a lot, kind of fast, but I'm trying to be cognizant of time. And you may have heard a lot of that already.
Thank you, Raquel. And I'm also, just on that note of cognitive time, it is 9:20. And I just want to urge, we've got a large group of participants that are still on the call. I want to emphasize that Raquel is joining Liz and Sally and Grant on the office hours, the weekly office hours that take place on Thursdays from four to five. And she goes through, this is the, the deck she uses to frame the updates related to this. So if there are specific questions that you may want to wait and ask those tomorrow during the office hours or via email, I would encourage that, again, just to the interest of time. Because I think we definitely have a lot more to cover tonight. But I did want to take questions from board members, if there are anything specifically we want to raise now. Oh, go ahead, David.
Quick, quick question. You, you said, you mentioned securing funds for a soft opening. Is there the prospect that funding could be available for something like that? Or is that something we need to contemplate in our budget discussions?
I think it's something to contemplate in the budget discussions. There has been some dollars, not a whole lot, that was provided early on when we first got into this COVID situation. But that was really to deal with distance learning and some increased sanitation. So I, I'm not aware of any specific amounts right now that we are, you are for sure receiving. We can anticipate we're going to receive something, but not sure exactly how much. Kirsten might be able to provide more about that.
Great, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from board members? And I'm just trying to see, I think there was one question on, in chat. Let's see, sorry, I'm going to move my chat. I think it says, is there, from Jennifer Dunst, is there any visibility in regard to federal support to help pay for some of the additional costs associated with this?
So we're continuing to get information that we will be receiving some federal funds, but I, I'm not sure yet exactly how much. I don't know if Kirsten is available to speak to that in terms of what she's hearing.
Yeah, we were talking about it earlier, and it's all dependent on congressional action. So it's not really budgetable yet. The, the top amount that, like the, I think, the projected amount Kentville would get if, if the entire package were approved is $400,000. But it's not, it's not, it hasn't been voted on.
Okay. And the next question is from Elisa. Is there any movement for MCOE to provide assessment tools that could be shared by all districts?
The one tool that I can speak to is our kindergarten student entrance profile tool. That's been utilized the last number of years. And it's actually funded through First Five Marin. They will continue to be offering that. It's, it's coordinated through the county office of education. And I understand that our, all of our Kentville teachers have already raised their hand to participate. And they, they participated in the fact, in the past as well. So those are the only ones I'm aware of right now.
Great. All right. If there are any other, if there are no other questions from board members, I would again encourage everyone to take the survey. I think that's the big takeaway here. And then second, questions are welcome and more feedback to this. And I, I think the best forum to do that is either on the office hours, again, Thursdays, four to five. And those are going to continue through the summer. Or by writing in directly to, should I say to Liz and Raquel both on this? Would that be the easiest in terms of receiving questions?
Sure, that's fine. One last thing I do have, which is, and it's very, very draft, but it's this next slide that I'll just continue to share. And this is related to some costs that could support summer planning. And I'm, I'm just, I'll be, you know, being really transparent. I just, I just don't know enough. And I looked at the contract to try to better understand some of the stipends for staff. And I know it's on the list related to some of the grade level, grade level leads and curriculum coordinators. But two areas that I can anticipate for this summer beyond just purchasing of the essential protective equipment is related to subcommittee work. And so, you know, there's this, the steering committee, which is there's one member from each subcommittee that's still to come together. But separate from that, there's the safety task force that I do really think it's important to still have staff voice happening there, as well as instruction subcommittee. And not just for planning for the small cohorts, but also contingency plan related to if we were, if we were needed to go back into distance learning and what that can look like. And then I didn't want to lose out on wellness support there. So in thinking about these groups coming together, you know, in my head, I thought, well, how many meetings would they come to? Or, you know, how would we coordinate that? It could be volunteer, volunteer basis. But my head went to some kind of stipending amount that could be set aside for people and not to exceed this 4,900. And I just kind of, again, did it by the hourly rate that's listed in the contract. And, and recognizing the safety task force could be not just certificated. There might be some classified staff members that would be good on that. So that's one piece that I wanted the board just to be thinking about. And again, these are very just estimated numbers. And this one over here to the right is around a summer pilot program and/or soft opening. And so where my head went about this was just thinking, okay, well, maybe if we could operate three classes at each site. And it's really about trialing out some of the protocols and procedures that the safety committee puts into place. So it could be a one-week program, it could be a two-week program, but you have to have staff there, obviously. I did it less than four hours, because if you go over four hours or more, you would have to serve lunch. At least that's what I'm familiar with, the summer programming. And so, you know, having six classes, three at each site. So you need six certified teachers. You don't need six pair educators, but you could use them, just thinking about the protocols, office support for both sites, as well as custodial. And so I took the hourly rate, some of the extra higher rates on listed on the district website to just to get some roundabout numbers. So a two-week program around $32,000, a one-week program around $16,000. And again, those are estimated numbers, but just thinking through if we are able to secure some dollars, as mentioned before, and again, we don't know that just yet, but what some of those costs might be.
I think this is extremely helpful. And I think also, it's just useful to have that in our minds right now. And I, I'm wondering if, again, we're meeting again in two weeks. If this might be something better flesh out then? Or is that too late to miss the boat on, on these kind of questions?
No, I think it's good to have the amounts, you know, just to be thinking about it. And we can at least solicit, see people's interest, but, you know. And we might have more information by then as well.
Right, okay.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Davina, sorry.
And I think that, let me see, I think there's an attendee, I think it might be Ms. Wernick, that has a question as well. But my question, Raquel, is, I don't know how other schools are thinking about this, but in this model, you know, obviously if school were to open next week and we have this three-week on, three-week off model, the teachers are on the 100% of the time because they have one group of three weeks and then they have their next group of three weeks. So I'm just thinking about all of our teachers that have, you know, school-age children. And so I'm wondering if any of the committees, you know, have thought about ways that we're going to support or address that in terms of childcare? If that's something that, you know, I've seen that in some other plans. So just wondering if any consideration or any talk the county has been around that? Because I imagine that, you know, for the teachers to be able to be there full-time, they need to be considering when their kids are on their off-distance learning. So like if they're on their three weeks off, how are we supporting them during their three weeks off? Not to be necessarily answered right now, but I just, I'm wondering if that's been a part of kind of the guidance or any work at the county right now.
So two things I'll say, I do know that that's part of the planning that Larkspur Court of Madera. I know Brett Geifman is asking questions about that of his staff related to what the needs might be and working with childcare providers. At the county office, when we came to the situation where we were trying to bring staff back and offer childcare for our essential workers, it was, and it might have been just too early in the situation with COVID. People didn't want to access it. They would have rather not have their child in those settings. And so I don't necessarily have an answer, but just, I would say those are the two experiences thus far. I do know that it's a question that KTA did ask about in their survey related to childcare needs. And so I think we'll get more information when we hear back from them as well.
Okay, thank you.
And yes, Susan, I guess your hand is up, please.
Thank you. That was a great segue, Raquel. Just for FYI for everyone, our teacher survey has gone out and we have asked that the teachers submit their answers by Thursday afternoon so that we will probably be able to share them by next week.
Wonderful. Thank you, Susan, for that update. And I also noticed there is a chat, a question that just came in from, on the chat thread. It's from Lisa Gleeb. I can, it's a segue. I've heard that we are looking at a three-week on and three-week off solution. How close to that are we? And additionally, aside from families being together, will we have a chance to list peers we would want to be in a cohort with?
So I think I touched on this just briefly before, is that we have not begun to develop any cohorts just yet, but are keeping, you know, a variety of things in mind as, as those will be developed and really trying to think about how are we creating heterogeneous groupings, which has typically been done in the past? And, and also keeping in mind siblings. I think that that will be a key piece to kind of keep on the forefront. In relation to the, the three weeks on, three weeks off, that is right now what we believe to be the model that we could implement. That's the most restrictive. If anything, it'll get less restrictive than that unless the number goes down. But so that's all we have at this point in time, though.
Great, thanks, Raquel. I think that, I think that ends, the question's coming in that way. Lisa just said a big yay about that answer. But in any case, thank you again, Raquel, for preparing this and keeping us all updated. There's been, also to everyone who's participating in these committees, because there's a lot of people that are dedicating a lot of time and energy. Thank you. It's in service to us all. We really appreciate it. And lots of work ahead, so we look forward to hearing about it in the weeks ahead. All right, let's move forward if we can to summer school. I think, Liz, you might submute.
I know, I know. Separately from the soft opening idea, it was the notion of some kind of summer remediation program. And I wanted to bring you a number on that, which is in the $30,000 range for four weeks kind of a thing. And that's just a really round number. The question is, if there is desire to put that in place, we're going to have, you're going to have to figure out what you don't want in next year's budget, because it's not in there. So, you know, you're, you're going to see a lot of numbers that have, that have that exact footnote on them tonight, starting with what you just saw from Raquel around soft opening, around EP or stipends for committee work, any money that we would be committing to a summer remediation program or acceleration or any of those. None of that is in the budget for next year. So it, it may be, there may be reason to go through the agenda, get the budget report, and then look, you'll be looking at these lists of items like the one-to-one, like the EPE, like the safety equipment, the, the numbers that Raquel just shared, the idea of $30,000 for summer school, and start to figure out if these are things that you really want. You know, that any parts of these or some combination of these are things that we have to have to be ready for school to start in the fall. Where is that money going to come from? Because we're on, we're on a razor-thin margin. I think we have $26,000, you know, in excess of, of, we're not deficit spending to the tune of about $26,000. I think that was the last thing I saw in the budget.
Okay, so you're suggesting that we adjust the agenda and go through the budget now? And then come back to the other?
No, 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 no. I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm not sure that a, a conversation about summer school is productive in, in the absence of knowing if it can be paid for.
Got it, okay. I understand. So is that?
So it would be sort of after, after budget, you know, there's nothing in action anyway that's, that's committing these dollars specifically for anything. The only thing that's coming up is, around summer school anyway. This was just a broader discussion. But it's, it's up to you when you want to talk about it.
Okay. I'm looking at fellow board members. Does that sound okay to you in terms of, of holding this discussion until we get to budget? And then circling back?
Yep, yes.
Okay. Davina, I'm looking at you, because I know this was originally.
As long as we get back to it tonight.
Okay, no, that's fair. Okay, lunch program for the 2020-21 school year?
Right, so we're working with PTA on an MOU. The question is, and this is something that is, again, all around the scheduling of students and cohorts, is, so let's just say kids are coming three weeks on, three weeks off. Will we be bringing our free and reduced lunch kids back to campus on the three weeks they're not scheduled to be at school to get their lunch every day? Or will we be giving them a grocery card, like we've been doing this spring? You know, those are things that don't need to be decided tonight. But those are, as the, those are, those carry different costs. And here's, here's sort of the, the hard part about this. The grocery cards that we bought this year were based on the cost of lunch from Good Earth, which is higher than what the cost of school foodies is going to be. And so are you, you know, is there, this is all money that needs to be sort of thought about and budgeted. So, you know, are we going to hold people harmless and basically give them $5 for a meal like we have all this spring, even though that's not what we'll be spending with school foodies? Or will we give what we would be spending on school foodies? Or will we give what we would be spending on school foodies? And/or will we say to families, "Your lunch is at school, come and get it, even if you're not at school today"? Any thoughts on other places, what other places are doing about that particular topic?
Raquel, is this something that you think might be best discussed in terms of the committee work? Do we need to make a decision, I guess, tonight on this?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's gonna be super dependent on how kids are scheduled.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna go there, I was like, say, it seems like there's, I don't know, it seems like this should be punted over to the committee work, specifically around the scheduling and seeing what makes sense. And if we don't have to make that decision tonight, I think we...
It's just, I just want you to be aware of it.
No, it's a great question to ask, so.
And Davina and I are participating on the, on the planning work, so.
Yeah.
We'll have the board voices there.
I guess for me, I mean, it seems like something that may come up on the call tomorrow, I don't know, but to me, this is gonna be something that all of our, all of the county schools are gonna need to address, is how they're gonna handle lunch, because we're all gonna be going with the same, you know, requirements if it's three weeks on or three weeks off. So I feel like this would be an odd thing to just be a Kent field decision of how we handle it, so I think this is really something to see what everybody, how everybody's gonna handle it that's in this situation, and, you know, sort of starting with what's actually legally required, that we, you know, that we're providing to all of the students, and how they're, you know, how they're accessing it.
I can share real quick, so districts that are operating their own food services, they continue to provide the food. So, for example, the Nevada District, they've identified locations in which families pick up the food that are all receiving distance learning, and so they just continue to, so it would be the same way. So even if you have a group of kids that are distance learning, if you continue with your food service, three weeks they're distance learning, three weeks they're in seat, they would come and pick it up theoretically, but again, we can make a local decision on that, but that's what districts are doing right now.
Okay, no, that's good feedback. Then, yes, I definitely would advocate that I don't think we should make that decision tonight, we'll listen tomorrow on that call with the county health, and see if they have addressed it, and if they don't, I think it's worthwhile to bring it up with them, and see if there is sort of a standard, or we take our own path, as we did with the current round. Okay, but thank you, Liz, for bringing that to our attention.
Sure, it's just something that is gonna have to be figured out.
Yeah.
And I'm done, thank you.
Great, all right, moving forward, we have the site updates, does anyone need a bio break? Should we do another five-minute one? It's 9:40. Looking at fellow board members, David, push on, huh? Is that what you're saying, everyone else, push on? Okay, push on, all right, so we're going into the site updates, starting off with Sally, and I am gonna... Sally, you still there?
Oh, sorry, gotta let her in.
Okay.
I apologize, I fell down on my job. Oh, no, wrong person, sorry, Stacy Sax, you're out of here, I don't know who you, sorry. Where's Sally? Sally, there you are, a lot of talk, okay, here she comes.
Hello, I'm still here. Okay, still awake. No. My report will be brief. In terms of enrollment, it's holding pretty steady, you know, in our grade one through four. Kindergarten is up above 90 students at this point in time, watching it carefully, so we're hovering about there. End-of-year celebrations, of course, we only have a few days left, so we've got Zoom meetings going on with all the classes, you know, bringing our years, unusual year together to a close. We have a final staff meeting tomorrow, and then, of course, on Friday is our virtual fourth-grade promotion, which we're all looking forward to attending. So, coming to a close. And the only other thing I might add is, we are working, because we don't have a kindergarten sneak peek happening this year, obviously, we are in the process of putting together a kindergarten orientation video that we'll post on our website, just for our incoming families to see and have a sense of our kindergarten program.
Like, can I just ask a question? And I'm sorry, I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me where we allocated, or we have the allocation of the teachers per grade level. I'm hearing you say that kindergarten's at 90 or above 90, and I'm trying to recall at this moment, how many teachers we have allocated to the kindergarten class?
Three.
Okay, so that's clearly not enough. So Liz, procedurally, don't we need to take a vote to, do we need to vote to add another? I mean, I understand there's a budgetary issue, but I don't think any of us are gonna be supportive of 30 kids in a kindergarten class, and I don't think it's, I don't think the contract allows that, so is that an item we can take on tonight? I don't think it's agendized for us to add a teacher.
No. No. And the issue, again, is gonna be, where's that money coming from? So if you're gonna add a teacher, something else has to come away. So there isn't $100,000 sitting in the budget that can be allocated to another teacher. So the question is, is there, is that, is somebody else gonna be deployed whom we already employ to be a teacher, who has the proper credentialing? Or are we hiring a new person? Or, you know, whatever it is, there, if it's bringing on more staff, something has to go to make room for that.
Okay, so I guess then, when we get to future agenda items, I just don't know if I'll still be awake by the time we get to that point in our agenda. I think we need for our next meeting to have the question of adding that staff member, and where we might find $100,000 in our budget if we needed to be on our agenda for our next June meeting, because I don't see how we avoid having a fourth kindergarten class if we're above 90 right now, unless we think a lot of those people are going away, which doesn't seem likely.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I feel frustrated by this topic, because I feel like I've been asking, week after week after week, to please have this on the agenda, and I feel like, especially now with the cohorts and what this model is entailing, you know, we have people waiting in the wings, and it doesn't seem reasonable to me that we're gonna be, that we're gonna be able to run our school without that extra teacher. So I am, I just have to say, I'm just frustrated, because we've known that the numbers have been climbing, and people need to make their plans, I want to make sure that we retain the teachers that we do have, that are working so hard right now with kids in front of them, and that we're prioritizing this issue as our number one, by making sure that we have the staffing, we're not gonna be running kindergarten with those numbers.
I don't know, I mean, I'd have, I can't say it any other way, that there, then there has to be a discussion about what's coming out, there have to be cuts, in other words, and so if this, I also didn't know that this was our number-one priority, I hadn't heard that the board discussed that and come to that conclusion. I know that you've been asking about it, and I've been saying, I've been giving my opinion that this needs to wait, that you need to actually see if those numbers materialize before adding a teacher, or you can deploy somebody who's not in a classroom, who has a credential that meets the needs, and take away a specialist position, for instance. But there, unless, unless you're gonna reconvene the finance committee and start looking for about half a million dollars, which by the time we get through tonight's agenda is what it's about gonna amount to, especially the added kindergarten teacher, then there's, we don't, there, that money doesn't exist in our budget next year. So between the $100,000 for one-to-one, the $100,000 for equipment, the $100,000 for a teacher, whatever else we just talked about, I mean, there, that, there needs, there needs either then be, as I said, if you want, if you want a committee convening to start looking for that money in the budget to make cuts, your hand, you know, obviously, there are some limitations on what you can cut at this time of year, and that's a lot of money to get to. So I, I don't, you haven't been ignored, but I have been saying, I don't think it's wise to add a teacher right now.
So, Liz, I hear that, and I appreciate the feedback, that all of these things cost money that we don't have. I still, if we're above 90, and I think the number might be as high as 96, I don't see how we avoid having four kindergarten teachers, and I will say, for myself personally, if I have to pick, we only get one of those things we want to spend $100,000 on, I'll spend $100,000 on that teacher before I'll spend it on one-to-one devices, or some of the COVID, I mean, there's $81,000 of disposable masks in the COVID supplies, I'd rather retain that teacher. So I do think this is a high priority, and I think we need to make a decision on it, especially as we have people that have been let go. If we are interested in trying to retain one of them, I think that's a decision we need to make at the next board meeting.
Right, but you can't open without the equipment. You can't, nobody comes if you don't have the protective equipment.
Yes, but I'm not sure that 600 disposable masks daily, I mean, there's $81,000 of disposable masks in that finance, in that budget for materials. I understand we may require face coverings for all the students, I don't know that we have to provide disposable daily face coverings for every student, I don't know the rules.
Let's get there.
Look, we can get there. I think what's gonna happen, I mean, is that, obviously, we're gonna go through this, and there's gonna be a lot of items that we would like, all of us, but I don't think meansful agenda, but I agree, running list, and this is definitely high on this list, as is, you know, as we're gonna hear, the EP equipment, I mean, all of these things are gonna add up, and it will likely take another meeting to talk about this, it's not gonna happen tonight, go ahead, Qua.
I mean, two thoughts, one, let's get there, let's have the discussion, you know, that was prepared for us, we also, for me, recognize that this was prepared with the best intention from staff who are closest to it. So I don't think, you know, it's our role, it's our role to have some judgment, but I didn't, you know, I'm not gonna debate whether, you know, 600 or 500 is the right number of disposable masks, I'm gonna rely on staff, but I do think that safety expenses can be used, can be drawn from the bond money, and/or Grant Grover, and, you know, we can confirm that, but to the extent that we can take out 100,000, 200,000 of expenses for safety, you know, that doesn't affect the budget, I think that's a good start. And then, you know, I agree, we need a fourth kindergarten teacher, you know, we can make some choices there, whether it's using someone, you know, who's already there that has credentials, or adding a new full-time, I don't know, but let's do as much as we can with monies that we have, you know, from bond or Grant Grover, but let's get there first, let's have that discussion, instead of saying, you know, we're upset and frustrated, that, you know, we have a lot of work to get through.
Can I, can I ask a process question? I understand there are limitations on what happens in terms of certificated staff, and Liz, you mentioned moving somebody who might have the credential into a kindergarten spot, and I guess, I'm not clear to what extent we can reassign people or eliminate positions to move people at this point in the year, I thought it was mostly too late for anything that wasn't classified.
The only thing it's too late for at this point is letting certificated people go altogether.
Okay.
Reassignment is not prohibited. I think, I think the time factor, and we'll get to this, is that, you know, as Raquel's pointed out over to the committees that she's working with, is that the ordering of protective equipment is a time, is very much a time-sensitive piece right now, so. And I, again, I haven't heard the board have a discussion about prioritizing these expenditures that we don't have the money for, anyway, so that's something that probably should be agendized, if there is a conversation to be had about whether or not to spend it on this or that. I think it needs to come from everybody.
Okay. Did you wanna? So I just think, I think we've been having an ongoing discussion about kindergarten enrollment for the last, like, three meetings, and all I'm saying is, we need to agendize at the next meeting how we're gonna staff kindergarten, because if we're at 96 kids now, three teachers is not enough, and if it looks like we need to move somebody from a different grade level, and that pushes the class size up in that grade level, like, we need to know what that looks like, so that if what we want to do is bring somebody back, and we want to find $100,000 in our budget, that we all have the time to do that, and we make, and if we're bringing someone back, that we make that decision soon.
I agree, totally agree.
So that's, that's all I'm asking for, is that we agendize this for next meeting.
Yeah, done, okay. All right, I think, sorry, it looks like Susan has her hand up, or maybe that was a hand from before?
Maybe it's Susan. Susan, did you have a new, knew something new to say, or did I just not take your hand down?
No, I have something new to say. This is just informational, I understand what everybody's saying, and I just wanted to, to just say that teachers are not comfortable supplying their own masks. I know we are not required to do so, but it's, you know, the district is kind of hoping that teachers might supply their own masks. We, teachers are not comfortable doing that, because we feel that, what if they're faulty, or what if they're not the ones that are really supposed to be in a school setting? So we would prefer that the district supply us with masks, I know it's not on the list of definite things that this school is going to supply at this time, but we would like it to be considered something that the district does supply for teachers, and, you know, I just wanted to let you know that that is something teachers are talking about and concerned about.
Great, thank you, Susan, for mentioning that. All right, moving back into, sorry, where were we?
Site updates.
Okay, actually, before, Sally, I'm sorry, I ran out, I just wanted to make sure that we did address the question that I had posed earlier.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you, okay, moving forward to Grant, thank you.
Hey, everybody. In the interest of time, I'll try to keep this to most essential information, and then, of course, if you have questions, happy to answer any questions that you have. I think we all approached the last two weeks with heavy hearts, as we tried to figure out how to communicate to our own children and the children in our schools, the distress that's happening in the world related to systemic racism, and specifically the treatment of Black people at the hands of police. I've really relied heavily on some of our very influential staff members, for example, on Friday, May 30th, Rebecca Jellin had reached out to me with the segment for Squawk Talk, with her book recommendation, which is a book called Ghost Boys by Jewel Parker Rhodes, which is actually about a young African-American boy that is killed by police, and the story is about that child transitioning as a ghost, and an experience that he has in meeting a variety of other children that have had similar experiences. That was the beginning of our, of our conversation, that was the Friday of Memorial Day week, and that went out on Squawk Talk on the Monday, as well as some comments that I had for, for students, most specifically. So we grew from there. On that Monday, June 1st, there were discussions in most all classrooms, specifically English Language Arts, where teachers broached topics of race with students, and I did hear from some teachers that they weren't entirely sure what to say, but they knew that they wanted to say something, and so some teachers read the note that I had sent on that Monday morning to all students as a way of just opening the conversation. I could go into great detail about some of the work that we've done around this, for example, the training with ADL on becoming an ally, with our seventh, our eighth-grade web leaders going into this year, but I think it's probably more important to just say that this is a topic that is very important to all of us at Kent. We'll be reading a book this summer as a faculty called Stamped: Racism, Anti-Racism, and You, it's a collaboration between Ibram X. Kendi and Jason Reynolds, and Jason Reynolds has adapted Dr. Kendi's book to a young adult literature that we're hopeful to make available to all of our eighth graders next year, and we're gonna start as a faculty and read it together. So it's a part of our own journey of heightening awareness and ensuring that we're addressing issues of systemic racism as a, as a regular part of how we're educating our students. This is an exciting week, it's the final week of school, and our eighth graders and every Kent Falcon deserves to feel celebrated this week, and appreciate all of the accomplishments that they've achieved throughout the course of this year. So tomorrow at 10:00 AM, our fifth graders, a group of fifth-grade leaders have actually done the, the planning for our new virtual step-up day for our... for our new virtual step-up day for our incoming fifth graders. And we also have a host of current, of future web leaders. So those are current seventh graders that'll be web leaders next year that are also leading the charge with those presentations. I had the chance to meet some fifth graders on campus last week socially distanced with face and mouth coverings. And they took some videos and a tour of the school. So it's really exciting to see our fifth graders take the lead with that. Each grade level has an end-of-year assembly scheduled for either Thursday or Friday, where all students and all teachers at the grade level will come together for a variety of really fun activities that, that teachers have put together as a way to celebrate. Traditionally, we have an end-of-year assembly with the entire school. And we felt that by grade level was a little bit more intimate, given the circumstances and the format. And then Friday is a very exciting day where we celebrate our graduating class of 2020, a class that will live on as, you know, a class that really persevered through a very significant time in education and in society. At 1:00 PM, we're proud to host a webinar similar to this one, where we will be live streaming a pre-recorded graduation ceremony, which includes many components that would be in a traditional graduation ceremony, including student speakers, a master and mistress of ceremonies, as well as video submissions by each one of our graduates. We really felt that it was important to get each of their faces and their words as a part of this ceremony, since we aren't able to be together with them and recognize them. At the conclusion of the ceremony, we'll be inviting all eighth graders who are interested and available for a drive-through recessional, is what we're calling it. And it's from 2:30 to 4:30. We have publicized to our eighth grade class a specific windows of time by last name when they're invited to gather at Comm Parking Lot 13. And then we have some parent and teacher volunteers that will be helping to direct cars one by one through the car line, whether it be driving through a balloon arch with music playing and names announced and diploma distribution and photo opportunity with a photographer there taking professional photos. So this is our best effort to make the day still feel special and to honor our students for their many, many accomplishments over the years and to thank them for all they've contributed to the Kent Field School District for the nine years that many of them have been with us. After Friday, we really, really go full bore back into our planning for, for next year. And I think Raquel really accurately summarized where all planning teams currently are. It's, it's a, it's a large task, but an exciting task in many ways as we consider these restrictions and redesign our approach to education to attempt to meet the needs of every single one of our students.
Great. Thank you, Grant.
Shall I add ours, Heather, as you're requesting?
Sure, please.
Okay, I actually sent to you, Heather, and to Liz, to share with the rest of the board, the nine pages of information that came in from the teachers at grades TK through fourth grade as to what they had been doing the last several days in, in relation to what's happening in our nation and our world. So more specifically, you can see that, that's coming, came to you in a Google Doc. But in summary, we drew heavily on the resources shared between teachers, other disinformation that came from other districts and those from the county office. We relied heavily on resources by reading stories to the students and having conversations in our Zoom meetings. Some of our grade levels reached back to the social justice standards that we had been introduced to, but have not adopted across the board. As I read through their notes, there was a heavy focus on vocabulary and terms related to race and equity issues that we felt important to introduce to our young students. We used the Basij Bear broadcast as an avenue to reach our students. The specialists, you may have seen it, did an excellent race and equity conversation with the Basij Bears on, on this issue. Maya Yamasaki and I sent out a letter on Monday. Another thread that I saw throughout the grade level notes was the encouragement to our families to have these conversations with their children at home so that we were a team in sharing this information with our, our young students. And then, as Methany alluded to earlier, last Friday, we came together as a staff and just had time together to talk about these urgent issues. We too hope to read Stamped as grant staff is reading for our summer reading project. And just lastly, I want to acknowledge Annie Sue's comment early in tonight's meeting, as well as Marcus's conversation that he had with us earlier. And the importance of hearing these voices and recognizing the urgency in these matters. And I really appreciate the board's commitment to that. I heard it tonight. And the teachers' commitment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Thank you for providing that additional update. I just forwarded it out to the rest of the board so they can see the written update as well. Great. Any questions for Sally or Grant? All right, moving forward, we're moving into Student Services. Erica, who I think is already on the line. This is specifically talking about the extended school year.
Yes. Hello, everybody. So we are, next week, we will start our extended school year for our Special Ed students. It's all virtual. There is no in-person sessions. It's June 15th through July 10th. There will be no class on July 3rd, on observance of the 4th of July. We will have 14 to 15 students from K to eighth grade, huge reach. We will have a teacher and two paraprofessionals. And the class will be interactive and the teacher and the paras probably, if not tomorrow, the next day, are going to figure out who's doing what and what platform. So we're using three platforms, just so you know that. We're using Zoom, Google Classroom, and Seesaw. So it's a lot of trying to put everything into basically a three-hour day. And that's it. That's all I have for ESY. Do you have any other questions for me?
Great, thank you. And I just didn't catch the number, I'm sorry, the number of students was? Okay, perfect.
And that's across both campuses?
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions for Erica? All right, thank you, Erica, for giving, for waiting so long and also for the very brief update. It's appreciated at this time of night. Okay, with that said, Kirsten, you are up on Budget Update.
I'd like to do a screen share. I have that PowerPoint.
Oh, yeah. Hang on, let me make you. I think you can actually, well, maybe I have to make you a panelist. Hang on, let me go, let me do something real quick. Hang on. Okay. Now you should be able to because you are a panelist. Yeah. Kirsten, you're muted.
Sorry. Is that, is that showing that?
Yeah, it's showing, it's showing your main slide and then the next slide. There you go. Now you got it.
Good?
Yep.
Okay, so I have 10 slides to share, so it won't be too long. So the annual budget cycle begins tonight with a public hearing, followed by budget adoption on June 23rd. Proposed budget includes information available through the end of May, including updates from the May revise. And I stress that it includes updates through May because so much has changed between May 31st and June 9th. So first, I want to give a brief update on the May revise. So the May revise provided some insight on what we had been anticipating, and that is that the state's financial condition is tilted in the wrong direction. The solutions proposed to reduce the deficit unfortunately also reduce funding for education. So what we are looking at is, in the May revise, a proposed 10% reduction to LCFF funds, deferrals or IOUs, and suspension or elimination of categorical programs. I put that in italases because that does not, that's not applicable to Kent Field, but it is. It would be something like after-school care at Sosilio, some, many of the other districts are impacted. So on a positive note, May revise also included two years of pension relief, which I can give more update on in a minute. So the assumptions, so this is a snapshot of key assumptions for the budget year and two years out. They are the framework used for developing the budget and will be reviewed and updated each budget reporting period. So I just wanted to talk a minute about school funding in California. So there's approximately 1,000 school districts in California. And the district allocations are determined by the local control funding formula. So if you look on the, on the slot, I don't know if you can see my pointer, but the LCFF funding is a calculation of our ADA times our LCFF base grant. So the funding for the determined allocation is supported by two things, local property taxes and state aid. If property taxes exceed the allocation amount, then the district is categorized as a community-funded district. A community-funded district is allowed to keep all XX taxes above the LCFF calculation. So in Kent Field's case, we have a projected tax growth of 4% that would give us an excess of $1 million and 11% over LCFF. So the next slide is an illustrated pie chart to show our proposed revenues. And it pretty much shows that taxes and local sources make up the majority of our revenues. State revenues, including lottery, have been reduced. State revenues, 10% on lottery, 20%. The total reduction was about $50,000. Federal revenues are projected slightly higher in the budget this year due to the one-time Federal Cares Act funding. And that is about $24,000. So when folks were asking about new money, for now, it's $24,000. The local revenues continue to receive an annual $1 million commitment from Kent Field Schools Foundation, as well as a $65,000 grant from KSPTA. Due to loss of facility uses in the summer of 2020, as well as reduced donation for field trips, local revenues have decreased 30%, or projected to decrease 30% next year. That's about almost $100,000. The expenditures, so salary and benefits obviously are the largest portion of our budget. They make up 85% of the pie. The pension relief is reflected in the budget and that's offering us savings in next year of about $240,000. And the subsequent year, it's about $210,000. So looking at remaining expenses, so the remaining 15% of the budget is towards materials and supplies. That would include the math textbook adoption, child nutrition, technology, computers, printers, professional development, insurance, legal, utilities, building repairs, and non-public schools. Within that 15%, that includes the, an additional $10,000 for safety. So if we're looking at what we have sort of set aside for EPE equipment, it's 30,000. It's the 30,000 total. So this is a comparative budget. And that, the reason I wanted to show you this was the, just two months ago, a lot, a lot of action was taken to, to find cost savings. So there was a 5% reduction to the budget. And then after COVID-19, then we had a 1% reduction to our revenue. So in 1920, we were looking at almost $800,000 deficit. And in 2021, at a moment in time, we are balanced with a $20,000 surplus. So now we're looking at fund balance, so snapshot of the budget. So that beginning balance, the 1.246, that is the projected beginning balance. Once we close the books, we will update that number. It is likely to be higher than 1.2, but I don't, I can't say exactly how, how much higher it will be until we close. Our ending balance is projected to be 1.26 with reserves at 6.75%. So this is our budget reserves disclosure, showing that we meet our state mandated 3%, our district designated 2%, Special Ed contingency revolving cash, and then we have undesignated about $228,000. So lastly, future budget impacts. This slide could have a million things on it, but just to kind of like think of the key key, this is, this is what I see. I, once the state adopts the budget, we'll know for sure if they approve the pension relief and we will know any other new funds we get or anything they decide to take away. We are faced with massive escalating costs in every direction, it seems. And we also always have to remember that there are Special Ed mandates to consider. And then, of course, we'll have negotiations for 2122. Are there any questions?
Kirsten, the, the pension relief has yet to be approved in the final budget, correct?
That's correct.
Any other large contingencies like that that are awaiting, well, I guess it's all awaiting the final vote, right?
That, that is the only thing. I mean, the only other thing you mentioned earlier was the possible federal injection of the 400,000. But I, at this point in time, it doesn't feel likely. And the state offering up anymore, as nice as it would be, we, we have to understand that the state is really hurting. There's a projected $54 billion deficit, so there's, I, I believe the state would if they could. I don't know how they will. Yes?
Kirsten, thank you for putting this together. Our 21,000 surplus is assuming the pension relief becomes permanent. So if that does not, we'd be in a deficit. Is that right?
Exactly right. Yes.
And then our 21,000 surplus also assumes that kick can contribute a little bit over a million. And if they cannot, because of the business campaign or family donations is down 10, 20%, that would put us in a deficit by what they can't raise also. So those are two levers I want to make sure we highlight.
They have committed a million for next year, Qua, that we've got their letter this week.
They, they have, but I mean, if business, if they can't, you know, we have to be aware that that's a possibility.
Yeah, you're right. It would be another year out, though.
Don't they raise this year?
Well, that's what they say. And then I've been told that really it's not that. I mean, because that would be, that would be impossible budgeting for us, right? Because we can't lay people off in the middle of the year if we don't get the money that we
From a budgeting perspective, I'm just talking about in the case that they can't, you know, they're 10% short on the business campaign, 10% short on families, you know, it adds up quickly.
I, I think if they make the commitment, they will, they would then pay it, but then it would impact the next year from them.
That's what I thought, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so on that note, it's the million-dollar commitment is built into next year and the multi-year, so that would be something to watch closely.
Okay. And, and we also don't contemplate any raises for a faculty in this multi-year budget.
Correct.
So, I mean, there are other expenses that are going up. Okay, thank you.
Also, just, Kirsten, just to be clear, I know we're all focused on that 24,000 number, that number, that did not include, as we just talked about, you said $30,000 for safety is allocated right now. That doesn't even come close to what we would need, obviously, for school reentry. So that's not contemplated in here at all.
That's correct.
Nor the one-to-one technology?
There is $50,000 budget for technology.
Okay.
But that, that's every year and we spend it, right?
Well, we had a lease, a lease purchase agreement that was expired, so I just left in, I carried that money forward knowing that if we had expiring lease, we would likely need to renew.
Right.
Okay, nor, obviously, I'm just going to keep adding these up, but the other one is obviously if there's any staffing. Okay, nor, obviously, I'm just going to keep adding these up, but the other one is obviously if there's any staffing additions that we would want to make, nor summer kind of pilots or stopping time for the summer, too. So none of those are included.
No, the only thing included in summer is the ESY program.
Got it, okay. All right, well, this is sobering. Any, anybody else on the board with questions? Go ahead, David.
Just looking at the multi-year projections, just want to talk a little bit about the statewide COLA, the CalSTRS employer rates and the parcel tax increase. Actually, the secured parpal taxes percent growth. So you're assuming the 4% are property tax percent growth for 2021 and then it drops to 2.5?
Correct, so, so the 4% growth I have verified with from Department of Finance, so that number is verifiable. From a meeting with Department of Finance that we had with County Office. It's our understanding that property tax guarantee is 1%. So anything we get above and beyond that has a few caveats. One of those caveats includes the CPI. So the Consumer Price Index. So as I understand it, when the economy goes down, CPI goes way, way down. And that impacts our proxy, our property tax growth. So as a precautionary measure, myself with, I, I believe all the districts in Marin have, have cut our projected growth at least in half, knowing that it's to prepare in advance for what might be future years of tight, tight budgets.
And on the, on the CalSTRS employer rates, 16.5, 16.02, and then 18.4. The 18.4 is sort of, is that back up to where we were going to be in year three?
Yeah, so it's a two Yeah, it's a two-year relief and then it goes back to the higher rates. And, and, and understand that by providing two years of relief, that means the out years will be more challenging.
Right, that was my, that was my next question, I assume that would be the case.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions?
Sorry, one more thing, and that's just on STIRS, that's not on PERS?
That, that is on STIRS and the relief was on STIRS and PERS. So that 240,000 was, was both.
I see. I see the employer rates proposed 20.
Yeah, PERS, the original PERS rate was 22.8 and the relief puts it at 20.7.
Oh, so the 2021 was going to be 22.8, it just sort of shifted out a year?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
21, 22 was supposed to be 24.9.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for Kirsten? Thank you, Kirsten, again, sobering. And I know we're moving right into the budget hearing, the actual opening public hearing. So if there are no further questions, I, let's move forward with that. Um, okay, so officially, we are opening the public hearing on the budget. Um, it's 10:20, not 8:30. So with that, I'm assuming Liz, as we've done in the past, we just ask if there are any questions from the community, just to see if there's any, so it's, it's like a public comment and it is officially open. And again, this is on the Kenfield School District budget for 2020, 21. You can raise your hand if you'd like to. There's also going to be one of the reserves coming up next. Okay, I don't see any hands. Um, all right, so we're going to close public hearing on budget. And I'm going to open public hearing on reserves. And reserves was attached to our agenda as well. And so are there any questions? Anyone want to raise their hands for this? Or questions from the board on the reserves specifically? Okay, then let's close that, closing public hearing on reserves. All right, thank you again, Kirsten. We're going to move into action agenda unless there are any. Okay, because we're all looking for it, I don't think, does anyone need a bio break? Is everyone going strong? Let's keep going, okay. Moving into action agenda, is there a motion to consider the approval of the warrants for May 2020?
Moved.
Second.
Perfect, thank you, Quoc and Sarah. Discussion? Oh, Davina, you're raising your hand for discussion? I can't hear you, just.
I know, sorry, question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, discussion, yeah. Are you waiting for my question now?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, my question, I'm trying to find it on my printed out handout, okay, here, sorry, I found it, I highlighted it. Um, okay, I had a few questions. Let me see, one of them, and I don't know if this is the right time, one of them is around a mileage piece. Um, let me see where that is. And my question is, maybe it's, I don't need to find the person's name right now. But what is the time span? There was a, there was kind of a high mileage piece on here, I'm going to find where it is. But I, I just didn't know from what month, what time period that covered.
Talking about is the one for $973.50?
No, it was more than that, I'm going to find it. In general, I guess the question could be answered just in general while I'm finding it is, is the mileage reported on here for longer than a month or is it?
Warrants are reported by, by, on a monthly basis.
Okay, because I think it was like, sorry, I will find it. If anybody else has something else while I'm searching. And my other question was around the use of the block grant and other sort of, and I've asked this before, earmarked funds for the underperforming block grant, I believe it was. And then there's other funding sources that needed to be allocated to specific students. I was just curious, when school closure happened, kind of what's happening with that money?
From a process, didn't we used to email these questions in the past so that Liz would have time to prepare for it? Or just kind of curious?
Well, Davina's asked the question about the underperforming, low performing student block grant. And we, I thought we had given information on that. Kirsten, I put you back on, on the speaker. Can you talk about where that lands in the budget?
Excuse me, that LPSG grant is still into the budget, it's under professional development, it's still available. And the board had approved a plan to do supplementary math instruction. I don't know that that is going to happen moving forward, but yes, it's still there.
Does it roll over? My question is, I know, I guess I'm still asking, because when I've asked before, we weren't like closed for the whole year and I didn't know how that money was going to use, if we were going to do anything for summer. So does that, if we don't use that money, are we bound to use that money this school year and does it roll over?
When, when you asked before, school was still in session, it's hopeful that it would be used. Excuse me, it will roll forward and it must be spent down by June 30, 2021. Or we will have to give it back.
Okay.
Davina, are you asking about the $973 mileage reimbursement?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that, it's probably, I'm not looking at the warrants, but it's likely a parent.
Yes.
Special ed reimbursement.
Yeah.
There's, one of the students that takes, excuse me, the first student transportation was hitting a lot of traffic on the return trip and that's at an appointment to get to. So the, rather than take the bus home, the parent was picking up the student to get them to the appointment. And we reimbursed for those, for that mileage.
So that was what one month of mileage was?
It's almost $1,000.
No, it, it was for the whole year.
That's what was my question, was the timeframe, and I just got an answer that it was for one month. So that's why I was really confused, because when I do my mileage, that just seemed really
No, excuse me, yes, we, the, the, then the, the resolution took a few months to come to. And then, once it came to that, the parents submit the reimbursement for, for, I believe it was six, six months of reimbursement.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is that, oh, yeah. Okay, I think, all right, so we ready to vote on warrants? All those in favor? I oppose? Okay, motion carries. All right, is there a motion to consider the approval of the proposal in the amount of $150,425 for COVID-19 back-to-school EPE supplies procurement for the 2020, 21 school year?
So moved.
Second, discussion.
I, I would start by saying the first thing I heard from Paul after the walkthroughs yesterday was that this needed to be increased.
Do you know what aspect of it he felt needed to be increased? Was it the physical stuff? Or the, or the consumables?
Anybody, I was supposed to be on those walkthroughs, but I was not walking yesterday, I was being x-rayed. Anybody help me out here who was there?
I was there, so I'm just pulling it up to look at it more closely.
I think it was this, the water washing hand station, I know there's disinfectant stands, but I don't, I didn't see anything for
Yeah, you're right. We talked about having some of those outdoor wash, wash stations similar to what's at Woodlands right now, to have just some outdoors when kids arrive. And I don't know what the projected cost for those are. So.
So at the risk of being a broken record, I would just say it almost doesn't matter because we don't have the 150 either. So, you know, if there, there needs, if these, if these procurements need to happen pronto, we need to pull together some kind of a subcommittee to decide where that money is coming out of the budget.
Yeah, I, I would say, you know, we were involved with the Measure D and the bond money has safety as one of the uses. It's silent on whether the safety purchases is disposable or not. I think it was more broad, it's just said for safety. I mean, I, I still think we should, it's appropriate to pull this amount, 150,000 from the bond money, it would free up the budget, the operating budget. I can't think of something that doesn't fit safety as much as this.
I just, I just pulled up Paul's email. He says there are new thoughts that every class will need a thermometer, another dispenser for hand sanitizer, first aid kits for each classroom and bins for student items.
And we can't open the school without these protective equipment. And that's the very definition of safety. And we know we're going to need another teacher. I think it's, I mean, I propose we take it from the bond money. The other thing I worry about is we need to get in line to order these equipment. And if we, if we take another week or two weeks, a month, we may not get it in time. So there's an urgency here that I think we should pass it and we should draw it from the bottom.
So I, I agree that there's an urgency. I actually am fine with all of the purchases on the list except the 600 disposable masks a day. Because I, and I'm not, I'm not sure that if we have to have every student actually wearing a mask to be in a classroom, I'm not sure we're going to have kids in the classroom. It just seems to me that's
What's the recommendations from the health authorities?
Well, I think Paul used the calculator that MCOE developed to get these ordering, this inventory done.
The rec, the recommendation, Quoc, is that it's highly, it's highly advisable, that it's not required. We are seeing in some of our districts that they are requiring students wear face coverings. As I mentioned before, any student or any child over the age of two that's physically active and can wear it correct, wear the face covering correctly is advised to wear a covering. So it's leaning us towards anticipating the public health to say it's going to be required before the end of summer.
Sarah, I brought the error on, on overbuying the mask because it's not like they, there are eggs or milk that will expire in the next year. You know, if, if in fact, kids don't need to wear it, you know, we can use them, you know, several months down the road. And so
Well, okay, but my point is actually not, I guess it's a couple of different things. One, I'm not convinced we actually need 600 masks a day that are disposable masks. But two, I suspect, for example, if face coverings are required, my kids would rather wear like the neck gaiters or the buffs or some other face coverings. And how many of our families already have face coverings for their kids? And how many parents, if they're worried about their student safety, are going to be wanting their kid to be wearing the mask they send them with instead of a mask that we're buying and providing? I heard Susan say the KTA wants the district to provide teachers with masks. That's a different question, but I, I'm still struggling with 600 disposable masks a day for an entire school year. That just seems, it's $80,000 that we don't have. And if we're required to provide masks on a daily basis that are disposable, that's one thing. But all of us are, I assume, having some form of non-disposable facial coverings that all of us are wearing every time we go out right now. And we'll expect them to have this summer for camp. I mean, my kids are going to have to have face coverings for their camps this summer, the outdoor camps that they're doing. So, I don't know, it just seems like a huge sum of money for something that is not clear to me we need anywhere near that much, even if we need to provide it for some of our students.
I don't, I don't know if it's going to come to this, like in negotiations or something, but I do know that there was a conversation in one of the subcommittee meetings where teachers expressed that there was, there was not a level of comfort with kids coming to, coming to school with masks that were either clean or appropriately sized or, you know, according to, in other words, you can only, it's kind of like our lap, it's kind of like our Chromebooks and iPads. We can control if we provide, we can control the quality. But we can't guarantee safety if people are just coming from home with whatever they had at home, whether it's, you know, and know that it was not worn yesterday and the day before and the day before that. So that, I think that's the rationale behind providing the disposable masks. And Raquel knows far more about this than I do, but that was, do you remember that being said in some meeting that we were in this week?
Yeah, the concern was that, because one of the districts is having third grade and older and a teacher expressed a concern that that makes more exposure for a kindergarten through second grade teacher, for example. So I think that's where it came from.
And, and the teachers are the more vulnerable population than the students. And I guess, I wouldn't hope, I, I hear you, Sarah, I hope we don't have to use it. I hope there's a vaccine, you know, you know, in the next six months. But we cannot open the school unless teachers and students feel safe.
I, I don't disagree with that at all. My point is simply that I don't want us to spend money we don't have for things we don't need to spend money on. And I'm not, I'm not aware, I'm not a doctor, I'm not an infectious disease specialist, but I'm not aware of, if all of us wearing face coverings is designed to protect our own droplets from entering the atmosphere and infecting other people or getting on surfaces, I don't know that any particular disposable mask that we buy frankly is going to fit every child's face or that it's going to do any better protecting those kids than the bandana that their parents has had them gladly wear all summer when the kid's ripping off the surgical mask we bought because they don't want to wear them. I just, I, I want to hit pause on an $80,000 expenditure, that's all. The rest of it I'd approve in a heartbeat. And the hand washing stations for outside the classrooms, all of that for sure. But I just think the face covering, just because kids are not going to want to wear them necessarily, I, I'm not sure they're going to fit every kid if we're getting, I mean, I don't know, do they make kindergarten size? I don't know what these are, surgical masks or whatever it is, I don't know.
I think we're going to get into a lot of issues with families around what's the material of the mask? My kid can't wear that, I, I just feel like it's going to be on both sides. But I think from a staff perspective, this needs to be fleshed out. But I think the safer thing is having the student actually fully wear the mask if that's where we go versus, you know, the discomfort of one that they're not used to. Because I know that we're, we started talking about in one of the committees, like having students practice wearing certain masks right now and getting used to it. I, you know, I understand having all of the backup ones, but I also feel like from an environmental perspective, this concept of throwing something away and disposable also doesn't seem like something that would be in line with our values either. So that also concerns me. And I wonder if there's like a middle ground here where we can do like order more supplies and have, you know, do something where we are set up for, you know, month one or something. And I wonder if there's like a middle ground here where we can do like order more supplies and have, you know, do something where we are set up for, you know, month one or something. Um, and do some kind, like, we don't need to, we don't know how long this is going to go. And we don't know where we're going to land, you know, in our conversations with public health and where we're going to land with staff comfort level. And I think that, you know, on the staff may say right now, oh, everyone needs to have the same mask. But, you know, maybe through conversation or maybe through the first week of school and kids constantly complaining about that given mask, they may feel different. We just don't know, which again is another reason I think to do the pilot if, you know, it's another story. But I think we just don't know. And I think it's too, it's too much to buy. Whereas I feel like the other things, like the hand washing and other stuff, they're, they're not, um, they're reusable items. But investing in something, you know, it's, I, I wonder if there's a way to see a proposal for this amount that's, um. You know, in, in phases, like what, what do we need to be okay for the first month? Um, and as we get more information, we can order more supplies if needed and continue to make the decisions on just the mask item.
Right. I have an idea. Um, can we approve this with direction to buy, you know, the, the stuff? Get in line for the stuff that's hard to get, like the hand washing stations, um, the, um, the soaps, et cetera. And then, uh, sharpen the numbers on the mass with Sarah's, um, feat, feedback. So that maybe, you know, we do it, um, we can get that down, you know, for the reasons that she articulated. I just worry that if we, if we, you know, um, hold this up, we're not going to get the essential stuff in time. We have to get in line. And I, I agree with Sarah not wasting money. And I agree with, um, to be to your point about, you know, from an environmental perspective, do we want to, you know, throw away six hundred masks a day? You know, I, I certainly don't. But, but that's, I don't want that perfection get in the way of getting, getting the order going.
Yeah, go ahead, David.
Guess my only point about that is if, if we did end up down the path where we have to come up with six hundred masks a day because that's what was recommended, you know, in August. We have to budget for that, right? Because we can't magically come up with the extra sixty thousand dollars. Um, three months into college, into school to buy them for the rest of the year. So I, I totally agree that we should buy maybe four weeks of masks, six weeks of masks, something like that. But it would be imprudent to go into the, the year with the possibility of this just fairly large expense just hitting us. You know, in week six and then having to send everybody home because we can't do the masks or I don't know, just, um.
I guess, you know, I like the idea what clock was going with in terms of giving direction. Um, the tough thing is right now, and Raquel and Liz are on the forefront of these meetings that are happening. And this, this information is very fluid. Um, and I'm just wondering if, you know, we can almost like give it up to amount, I don't know, I just think, I mean, I think. There's this, and I don't, you know, I, and I, and it could be, maybe things change in, you know, in two weeks, in three weeks. Uh, we're going to have a call tomorrow morning at nine AM to hear, you know, directly. Um, but is there a way, and also I was wondering about just from a MCOE perspective, could they help us with these buying decisions? Could it be, you know, a countywide thing where we're not buying, you know, each district is buying all these crazy amounts of masks that we compile the stuff and then giving them out? I don't know. That's just another idea. Is that a thought out there?
We've been told that's not, not happening right now. Where everyone's pretty much on their own. Is that, that's the latest that, that Trina and Kate said, right, Raquel?
Yeah, I mean, we're continuing to get questions, I think, because, um, the district business officials are asking, because vendors are coming out of the woodwork, as you can imagine. Is there some way we could do some sharing so there's an economy of scale? Um, and I know Trina Maras, our deputy superintendent, is heading that up. Um, and so I, it's just the time, it's the urgency piece, I think, from, I think many of us are talking about is the concern, is that needing to get an order in? I think, um, if there's any way that we can at least preliminarily the first quarter per se of the school year recognizing it's a percentage of the year, starting there maybe. Um, because I'm just worried that there's not going to be materials available.
Sarah, are you comfortable if we approve this amount, we give direction to really sharpen the pencil on the mask?
I'm not willing to approve the masks with eighty thousand dollars. I'm just not. I'll approve all the rest of it right now. Um, on the masks, I would either have us come back in two weeks or I would approve what we think is, you know, a month's worth of masks to order now and come back in two weeks and talk about it. I just, we don't have eighty thousand dollars and I understand David's point, like we need to budget for it. But we're going to be sharpening the pencil. We're about to talk about staffing and one-on-one stuff. I mean, we, we have hundreds of thousands of dollars to try and find and we just cut close to a million dollars like three months ago. So this is going to be hard, really hard. And I don't want to sign up for an expense that I have no idea how we're going to pay for.
Well, technically, we don't, you don't have the money to pay for any of it.
Right, that's the point. I know.
I understand, but I, some of it we can't open. I, the masks, I actually think we could open school without that kind of volume on the masks because everyone's going to have face coverings for their kids.
Right, you need it for the teachers. I, I hear your point.
And, and I agree, if, if, if we need to get the teachers, you know, a quality mask that they're, that's one thing. But six hundred a day that are disposable for the kids that are not going to wear them, we're going to have them, I don't know, it just, it doesn't make sense to me. And I don't want to belabor this point. I mean, it's ten forty, we've been on this call for more than six hours. But, um, I'm, I'm, I will vote no if that mask numbers, if there's a mask number that's bigger than about a month's worth of masks.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we take this as is, um, and just do a month's worth on the masks and revisit this in two weeks if need be with hopefully new information? Um.
So that we can get going, yeah.
I mean, because I think it's, I get, I think we're all on the same page. There's urgency around this, specifically on this issue. On the P E P E.
I just have a question. I mean, is there a way to find out, there we tomorrow or whenever, if, um, schools are required to provide the mask? Because I understand about the masks for the students, but I, I still, even if we do one month, that's still six hundred masks a day for a month. So, I, I don't know, are we going to, do we, I don't know, for Kelly, if you think that we'll get, if that's going to be more of a site level decision of if you provide them or if just students have to wear them? Or do you anticipate that we're going to be told that we have to provide, that the students can only wear the ones that we have?
Um, I think first we'll have to, it's only going to be required if our public health officer deems it required, right? So in right now, it's not, um, but might it be best practice? So I think that's one piece to say, if we identify that the only way to open schools that kids are, um, required to wear masks. It would be like, um, any required materials, like a Williams report. So it'd be just equivalent to instructional materials that you have to have, each child has to have access to. So we'd be required to offer it. Now, if they chose to wear their own from home, you know, we can make a determination of, we would allow that, right? Um, and we did talk about one other thing, and I'm not sure if, if the, we were able to do the research on. But the opportunity of not getting disposable masks, but actually getting, um, cloth face coverings that could be offered through a laundered service, right? So, um, coming every, every three weeks, having non-disposable face coverings that would be laundered off-site. And so they would come back, um, every week, the group of kids would get their face coverings at the school site. So that was another way in thinking about the kind of environmental, kind of like a diaper service, organic diaper services, something similar to that. So I just don't, and I, I did not have the space to, to dig into researching that, so I'm not sure if we've been able to look into it.
Go ahead. My suggestion is we approve this amount with direction to only buy masks for the first four weeks. Um, to more information is have, just because we approve it doesn't mean we're going to spend it. The second part of my suggestion is we pull this from, um, bond money.
Well, if you approve it, we're going to start ordering and it's where it gets spent.
Sorry?
I, I didn't understand what you said. If you approve it, it doesn't mean it has to get spent?
No, he said it comes from the bond.
Only order four weeks' worth of masks, get all the other stuff.
All right, so it's nine thousand instead of eighty-one thousand.
Yeah, or say ten thousand for. That, that's what I would bend this to or give direction to. Would you be okay with that, Sarah? And then we can revisit.
Yeah, because I think we have an obligation to provide it for students, for some students. If, if we're, if we're going to say that masks may be required or it's the best practice. I think more parents are going to be comfortable providing their own for their kids than taking ours. But I absolutely agree that for some students that need them, we should be prepared to provide them.
Um, can we put the caveat too, since there is that call at nine AM? I don't know if there's going to be breaking news coming out of that call that, you know, he might change direction all of a sudden radically. Um, but I just, you know, obviously that, I don't think an order is going to go in before nine AM. But I do feel like a lot of this information is very, very fluid at this point. So just knowing that. Just are aware of.
Can we vote on that?
Yeah, does that, does that make sense, Liz, what we're voting on?
Yeah, Raquel, you, you were there yesterday. Did you hear that every classroom needs a thermometer? Another hand dispenser for hand sanitizer, first aid kits and, and bins?
Um, we went back and forth about the thermometers, uh, the dispensers. I do think we need more dispensers. I think we need to increase that order. Um, and then the, he didn't mention the outside water, um, sinks, outside portable sink. So I have no idea what those costs are and they're not listed here. But I feel like we did agree that we wanted something like that outside.
So if we knock, uh, uh, sixty-two thousand dollars off of this, that, that might come back with all of that other stuff. That's nine, that's eighty-one thousand minus nine thousand.
That should be seventy-two.
Not seventy-two, thank you.
Sure.
It's late, but.
So I, I'm just saying, if you're approving not to exceed, um, one hundred and fifty thousand minus seventy-two thousand, whatever that is. Um, that, that might not be enough if this other stuff needs to get ordered. I mean, I do believe that the ordering, that, that there is going to be a shortage of everything very quickly.
I mean, I, I'm comfortable approving the total amount, but with guidance, with, you know, guidance on the mass and the, and the extra, we have some cushion for other things. I trust that Paul and, and site are, are making the best decision and not, you know, spending the money willy-nilly.
No, of course. But I will, I just, you know, there, there needs to be an immediate convening of somebody to start figuring out where that money's coming from. Oh, bond, you want, okay, so we want to do this part is going to be bond, okay. I, I, I feel compelled to confer with bond council tomorrow just to make sure that's a, a, an extended.
My, my interpretation, you know, I've shared, but yeah.
And just, you know, just out of clear, you know, curiosity, because I was at the Kent one and I thought, I remembered that the thermometers could be passed along. And Raquel, do you remember that? Like, I think Laurel even said that they could be, you know, just sanitized and then passed to the next. So they didn't necessarily need one per classroom, but I don't know if that was different at Basage.
No, no, we didn't talk about it at Basage specifically. Um, but Laurel did mention that we said we would need more, but we were also thinking about a staggered start time. So I do anticipate that we will need more. Um, I just don't know exactly how many more.
Right, but it may not be one per classroom is my point.
No, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Have to be that many.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, moving forward. Okay, so everyone is clear? Okay, Liz, you're clear or putting it out there? We haven't articulated correctly? Um, okay, so all those in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. All right, um, moving forward to the next. Um, this is, um, is there a motion to consider the approval of the proposal in the amount not to exceed a hundred and five thousand dollars? Purchases to implement the one-to-one technology program for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year?
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, David. Okay, discussion. Um. So this is back to the same kind of square we were before. Um, we do not have funds currently. Uh, this is not counted as a safety issue. Um, unless we could count it as a, I mean, a safety issue, the sanitary sense of like device, one device per person is mainly used for, um, prevention of.
I think that's harder.
I think so too.
It's not a modernization issue?
Yeah, I wondered about whether it was a modernization, but probably not.
Um, why don't you let me ask tomorrow and we'll move along, you know, and, and that'll. Um, you may need a special meeting, but at least I can get those answers right now.
Um, for a lot of these, but anyway, okay, so let's take that. Um, so we're just going to remove it from the, uh, agenda. We're not voting on that.
Well, I'll have an answer for you, um, I would imagine by, at least by the end of the week.
Right. Hope, hopefully council.
Just feeling lenient tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, um, is there a motion to consider the approval of the two thousand twenty, twenty-one split spending plan for the Kentfield School District Education Protection Account EPA certificated salaries?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Um, discussion. All those in favor? I. Um, Sarah, you raising your hand or thinking?
Sorry, yes, I was looking at the agenda, sorry.
I know. Um, okay, oppose, motion carries. We're moving. Um, is there a motion to consider the approval of a ten thousand dollar superintendent spending threshold for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. And again, this is just, um, what we've done in years past, no changes. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Is there a motion to consider the approval of the memorandum of understanding between Kentfield School District and Ross Valley Charter School?
To move.
Great, thank you. Thank you, David, for a second. Discussion. Um, and this is what we went through last year, the same one, this is the first time. So it isn't as a repeat and we don't, basically the answer is we can't not approve this. This is something we have to do, right?
Right.
Yeah, it's actually was all this year. It just seems like last year. It's, it's taken all year to hammer out an agreement at the county level that all districts are following and they'll finally get their check.
Got it, okay. So, but the point again is we can't, we can't not approve this. We don't want to give money. It is what it is.
It's mandatory.
All right, um, so no discussion, right? All right, all those in favor? I oppose, motion carries. Okay, is there a motion to consider the approval of the GLC curriculum chair positions for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second, thank you, Sarah. Discussion.
I wanted to, I wanted to say something about this only because, um, it is a ninety thousand dollar ticket. And so I wanted to put this in, at this position in the agenda after the budget report. It usually is put in, um, consent. But I thought it needed to have another, you know, just, you just need to know that that's the total cost. And, um, you know where we are budgetarily.
A question on this. If, if we don't approve that, is there a proposal to get the work done another way? Is there another plan that, that we can look at?
Uh, no.
So Liz, your, your point is simply that if we didn't approve this, we would find quote unquote ninety thousand dollars. But all the work that the grade level chairs and curriculum chairs do doesn't have a different home.
Right.
I guess my, my question is, we, we have grade level chairs every year. Why, why is this incremental versus, is this an increase versus last year? Um, I don't understand.
They just get compensated for the position and by the time you add them all up, it's ninety thousand dollars. But that's consistent with, it's the same as prior years.
But it's the same as prior year, so isn't our twenty-one thousand surplus have this in it?
It's already built in.
Yeah.
Yes. So this is.
Yeah, if we say no, we save money.
Yeah, but this is part of the surplus. I, I get it.
This is already factored in.
Okay.
Yeah, we're spending it. Yeah.
Correct, but you, and you've just spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in addition to what's currently budgeted. So I'm just, I just want to.
I get it.
All of the factors to be on the table.
Yep.
I think we've only spent a hundred and fifty. Where's, what's the other hundred?
Well, the tax money, the, the, the one-to-one is a hundred.
I thought we didn't vote on the tax money.
Not yet.
At some point, it's going to get spent from something, I would think, but maybe not. So, yeah, you're right, a hundred and fifty, so a hundred and fifty over.
The only thing I would ask about this, Liz and Raquel, in your experience in districts of our size, of our configuration. Is it, is it true that grade level coordinators, curriculum chairs, curriculum reps exist across the structure in this way?
You know, it's different everywhere, David. There's really, it's all over the map, I'd say. But, you know, we have large schools, we have, you, you know, reduced the assistant principal time to half of what it was. We have new administrators, new superintendent. I don't think it's, you know, I, I think this is a reasonable expenditure. It's just, it's just, it's. So what I expressed earlier was that you have very little wiggle room right now at this time of year to find large sums of money in the budget. And you're seeing that demands are coming in, in large sums.
Yep.
And, and, and your point is this is something that we could still do at this time of the year.
Correct, they don't.
You're also not recommending it.
Right, the, 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 the positions do not have to be filled. If they're filled, they have to be paid with it, what's been negotiated.
I get it. I just want to mention the context.
I, I think the leadership that these teachers provide as grade level coordinators is critical in this year in particular with the. is critical in this year, in particular with the onboarding and new senior staff, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and I would tell you, there are a few little name changes that'll come along, that'll apprise you of, that, based on some staffing switches that have gone on in the past week since this, uh, agenda was developed, nothing, there's nothing substantive, it's, it's, it's just name changes.
Yes, I think everyone, um, are we ready to vote? I, I agree for, this, this is not, it's not, we wanna, um, take away that layer. Um, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose. All right, motion carries. Okay, um, okay, um, is there a motion to consider the approval of the employment inter-district transfer request? And this is from Denson, grade K, Marshall, grade eight. And this is just to clarify, um, Liz, these are just, they should have been with the last grouping, um, so it's, it's just, um, they're late in coming.
Yes.
Right. All right, I'll, um, wait, did I? Oh, yes, I think you, Davina and Sarah is the second. Um, okay, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Wow, okay.
We, I think we probably should talk about summer programs at this point.
Yes, please, let's do that.
Um, uh, so the question is, um, is there a desire to spend, you know, thirty-some-odd thousand dollars on summer instruction for students, or, and/or the soft launch, or not, not at all, or stipends? I mean, this is, again, not money we have. This is not money that's, that's anywhere. So is there programat, is there a programmatic desire that is going to then add on to that total of things that we have to find to cut?
Go ahead, Quoc.
You know, I love everything, but we don't have money. And so my preference, as I weigh the two big thirty thousand dollar buckets, is for the soft launch. I think the soft launch will help us iron out the kinks. Um, it will help train students, parents, you know, and staff. Um, and as I weigh that benefit versus remediation work, um, which is really important, I think we need a successful launch that outweighs it for me. In terms of where to get the monies, um, at worst-case scenario, ten thousand in deficit spending isn't gonna change our reserves that much, uh, but perhaps there are other cuts we can make. And I don't know if Grant Grover funds is appropriate, you know, for a soft launch. Um, so th, those are my thoughts.
I'm wondering if, um, if those, um, goals can be combined, so. Um, and I also wanna keep in mind the earmarked funds we have to serve our most vulnerable populations that need to be spent on them, and just that we didn't actually complete that this year, um, and that, that doesn't sit well with me. Um, we have students that did not, you know, benefit to the same degree from, you know, the emergency closures. We couldn't plan for them appropriately. Um, so, you know, we have just a range of needs out there. Um, and in order for everyone to get kind of a leg up in starting, I really want to think about how are we planning with them first in mind, and not as an afterthought? Um, and, you know, maybe it's the numbers change about how many students we're allotting. Maybe it's a particular, I know that districts are considering, you know, who to prioritize for live instruction, and Tony Thurman came out with this too. You know, maybe it's students that are still working on reading. Whatever formula we wanna come up with that has an actual rationale, um, that's based on research of, you know, which students we need to target right now, those could be the same students for the soft launch. And I think we have a responsibility, um, and we're, it's gonna come back around. If we don't pay for that support for them now, we're gonna be paying for that, um, later. And so, thinking of our strategic plan, our goals, and the money that we need to allocate to those students specifically, so I, I feel, as I have this whole time, very strongly that we come up with a way to serve those students differently.
I, I had the same thought. I completely agree. If we can come up with a way to try and, and target the students that need that extra support and use them for the soft launch process, especially if we can use some of the grant funds that were to target those students in the first place, that helps us pay for it also, um, but I think that's a win all around.
In terms of funding, if we can use some of the grant money, can we also touch Grant Grover money, Liz?
Well, there's a question on that. Grant Grover money was, um, was, um, base, uh.
It's capital, not expenditures. It's not, it's, it's gonna go towards capital expenses. It's a building.
Well, yes, and it was, it was a legal settlement, which is different than selling property. So selling property has some very strict guidelines in that code, and this was not that, per se. So, um, there's a possibility, um, you know, that that could be argued. You'd have to talk to attorneys about that. Um, yeah, I think, I, and I'd like just to, um, make sure that we understand about the, the, um, soft, the soft launch would happen later in the summer, and that could be targeted kids. Um, the money that's being discussed, that's, um, the low-performing student block grant, for instance, um, that has, I believe, been rolled into next year's budget, and therefore is in there and, and already allocated for the children who are supposed to get services from it, so that would take that away from next year's services package to use it for the summer.
Right.
Okay.
I also, I mean, there was also money that I think was after-school tutoring. Um, and I, I know I asked this question before, and I think it was answered that that was already included in salary, or, and so I'm also, there's also students that were supposed to be getting that as one of their supports.
Right, so in the, in the case of, you know, we're talking in the tens of thousands of dollars, you know, small amounts of money for, um, homework club and that kind of thing. And, yeah, people were left whole with their salaries when we went out on, on quarantine. So that, those funds have, were part of people's salaries and were expended. We did not, we didn't, we didn't, uh, reduce anybody's compensation as a result of being out on, um, quarantine. Am I making sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I know, we're, we're hitting that point in the meeting. I know, I was gonna say.
I know, Heather, I was gonna say, I think we need to think about, it's eleven o'clock at night, and I'm sorry, but I, I feel like we've gone past our functioning hour. Um, so whatever's left on the agenda, like the scheduling of next meet, of the next meeting, can we just do that at our meeting, the next meeting in June? We have a meeting in two weeks, like.
That's what I was gonna say. I suggest that everything under governance, um, and reports from the board, we just moved to, I don't think there's anything pressing in here. Um, the only thing I would wanna suggest, and I think, Liz, you're gonna have answers to some of those, um, budget questions, I think we should probably plan that we may be having a special meeting before that two-week meeting, if we need those, if there's any kind of pressing questions, um, that need to be answered. Specifically, Liz, what you sugge, I just wanna pick up on this, and maybe there's no interest. If, if the answer truly is, we can use bond funds and Grant Grover, we're covered. Um, but if we're not, we may want to revisit this before our June meeting, um, and actually take a deeper dive. If we're looking at a kindergarten hire, you know, like, all those things stacked up, that might not be enough, um, within. So I just, I wanna put it out there. Um, I think it's too hard to think about this right now, but.
It's too late.
Well, I mean, we have to present a balanced budget to the county by July first. We can't pretend we're not expending these funds till after, you know, we, what do I wanna say? I, I mean, I guess the point is you can face it now, or you can face it at first interim, um, but you have the ability to make adjustments now that you don't have at first interim once you've got people on con, in contract, et cetera, for like classified staff, let's say. I mean, th, these are large amounts of money for us. These are multiple positions, um, that are, that have just now, you know, been contemplated as being added to the budget. So we can't present a budget to the county on July first that has a three percent reserve. If you, I mean, you could, but that then violates your own policy.
I don't think anyone, I don't think anyone's proposing.
None of us are suggesting that.
We're proposing having a special meeting somehow between now and the twenty-third, and, and being sure that we're in a position to make some serious decisions on the twenty-third.
Right.
The only thing we're asking is, is whether it's useful to keep circling the drain, uh, at eleven o'clock at night.
No, that's the question, and I think, um, so I, with that in mind, I mean, I don't know what that date's gonna be, but I think we, that will get, get on the calendar likely within the next two weeks. Um, and then I'm proposing everything on the governance to what Sarah suggested, um, and the reports from the board trustees, um, get moved to our June meeting. The only other item that I'd like to just touch on, because we did have a few that came up, was the future agenda items, um, is if we want to, um, discuss putting those on the next agenda, which is, uh, specifically the accelerated math, um, we had kindergarten teacher, and maybe those are just gonna be discussed in our special meeting, um, about adding those items.
I think the kindergarten teacher, I don't think, um, maybe I'm just too tired. I don't wanna do accelerated math right now.
No, 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 I'm just saying, this is just a discussion if we wanna put it on the next agenda.
No, I know.
Let's, let's just, let's discuss that at the next meeting too, whether we wanna agendize that or not. And I think what I would ask is that going into the special meeting that it seems we're going to definitely need to have probably next week, on the finances, if Raquel and Liz could put their heads together and give us a list of ideas of places where we might find the money, um, and confer, obviously, with Sally and Grant, to the extent, or anybody else who has input. Um, because I, I, I feel like it's gonna be very hard for us as board members to have any idea what's a reasonable place to try and find more money, given that we've already made so many cuts already, and just, so that would be super helpful from my perspective.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, um, all right, so if that's the case, um, I think we're done, guys. I think it's, um, it's eleven oh eight. I'm not even gonna go into the debrief on, um, the norms, so I think we obviously know. Um, I think we might have tried to accomplish too much this meeting, but it's, it is what it is, um, in terms of all the, I just wanted to say, um, thank you, um, Liz in particular, um, for helping to host that, the, um, recognitions. I think that was really, um, successful in the sense I think everyone who wanted to speak could speak, and that was, um, I think, a really special time.
Yeah, very nice. Thank you.
Well, David, thank you for the hands up. I, I can't even figure out my, like, trackpad, so I'm glad you're looking at the hands, barely handle chat. Um, all right, but I think we'll adjourn, guys, eleven, I guess it's a record for us.
Better David than me, I would've just denied everyone.
All right, next time Quoc is doing it.
No.
Oh, no.
Anyway, all right. Thank you, Raquel. This is the longest meeting ever had, for record.
Thanks to, to everyone on staff who had such great insights to provide and share, especially Kirsten with her hard work, which, what is a very fast-moving target. Well done.
Anyway, all right, thank you to our participants. Thirty-one of you have still left. That's amazing. All right, good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.